Good evening Socorro, this is Ivy Avalos, your mayor. We're just waiting on one member of council, we will start at 6:15, thank you for your patience.
This meeting of the City of Socorro City Council is set to begin. Due to the ongoing threat to public health, the City of Socorro, Texas Council and Commissions will be conducting a virtual meeting broadcasted by phone and live streaming services from council chambers located at 860 North Rio Vista Road, Socorro, Texas 79927, to practice social distancing and limit the number of people physically present at one time. There will be no physical access to the location mentioned above. We do ask everyone to silence their electronics to avoid any sound interruptions. No disruptive behavior or outbursts will be tolerated. Violators are subject to call disconnection and possible prosecution. Anyone who has signed up to speak or present will be called upon by the presiding officer to speak during public comment or on their specific agenda item in accordance with government code 551.042.
La reunion de Consignio de la Ciudad de Socorro estar por empezar. Por el problema de salud pública en curso, el Consilio y las comisiones de la Ciudad de Socorro, Texas, transmitirá su reunión por teléfono y servicios transmisión en vivo desde la Sala de Concilio localizada en 860 Norte Rio Vista Road, Socorro, Texas 79927, para practicar el distanciamiento social y limitar el número de personas físicamente presentes. No habrá acceso físico a la ubicación mencionada anterior. Les pedimos a todos que silencen su equipo electrónico para evitar interrupciones de sonido. No se va a tolerar ningún tipo de comportamiento perjudicial o revoltoso. Que no siga estas reglas, su llamada será desconectada y puede ser infraccionado a quien se haya apuntado para hablar o presentar. Será anunciado por el oficial conduciendo la reunión para hablar durante los comentarios públicos o sobre su tema específico de la agenda de acuerdo con el código de gobierno
Thank you for joining us, it is 6:11pm, this meeting is called to order. Mr. Dante, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes ma'am. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, establishment of quorum. Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Ralph Duran.
Here.
Here.
Mayor Ivy Avalos. Here. Victor Perez.
Here.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum. Thank you. Item number four, public comments. Mayor, we have one speaker for this item, it's Renee Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez.
Can you hear me?
Yes sir.
Okay. Mayor, thank you. Distinguished members of council, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I'm actually wanting to talk on five, but it's a workshop so I can't, but I'm gonna say it here. So if you guys are working on the capital improvement, I would like for you guys to put a phase two on sidewalks. We did a phase one last year, I know that Mr. Perez, Mr. Ralph Duran, Mr. Colombia Lobos and Mr. Nevares were there when we did a phase one that I introduced. I think that it's very prudent for us to put a phase two on the capital improvement since you already working on that. Remember that we have a $45 million plan that if we wanted to do sidewalks and complete the whole city, that's how much it was gonna cost us two and a half years ago. So I'm just suggesting, and I hope that you guys take my advice into consideration, to start with a phase two because if... Because if I was still there, I would do a phase two, basically. But it is for our constituents, for the betterment of the city, to continue that phase one to have a continuation of a phase two. Hopefully you guys can take my consideration and advice and hopefully we can move forward and put a phase two with $300,000. Okay. Another thing I wanted to say is... Why are you guys there in chambers if you already got laptops and hotspots and putting our people in harm's way? That's just a comment of mine and an observation that I was told, is that how come you guys are there in chambers when you guys got all of the equipment to be at home? That's just my two cents, I just wanna put it out there because they told me, they asked me, I said I don't know, I'll just pose the question. And just keep the city moving, that's all I request, keep the city, keep the project going because we did implement a lot of stuff that we need a continuation of. Thank you.
Mayor, those were all our speakers. Thank you. Presentations, item number five, workshop and discussion in action on approving capital improvement items for the capital program.
Yes. At this time, I would like to make a motion to move items 24 to 29 before the presentations.
Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevares.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Hi.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Muted.
Ms. Villalobos?
I'm sorry, there's so much background noise and I didn't hear, it's items number 24 through 29?
Correct.
24, give me a minute, please. Okay, yes.
Unmuted.
Did you guys hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes ma'am, we did.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Moving on to City Manager 24, presentation discussion in action on City of Socorro Projects, Arterial 1, 1682, and Nuevo Wecco Tanks Roads, presentation by Kim Johnson Blutton Associates.
May I share my screen?
Give us a second ma'am, thank you.
Okay, there you go, full screen. Council, Mayor, City Manager, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come in and provide you an update on the two projects that we're working on for the City of Socorro. Those two projects are Arterial 1, it's also named as 1682 Boulevard and Nuevo Wecco Tanks. I apologize, I'm Jose Reyes, City Manager, Office Manager for Danenbaum Engineering. Yeah, we want to get you just a good update on the projects, where we're at and where we're going, and give you an idea where, you know, a timeline of these projects are gonna be, I guess coming back to you on a consideration of public meetings. So with that, I'll let Carlos, Carlos Pernales begin on the slides. Carlos?
Sure, thank you Jose. As you can see, you know, like Jose mentioned, we're gonna talk about two different projects. These have been in the books for quite some time, I think we gave a little presentation back in January with you all, it was just a real quick overview. What we wanna do today is, like the bullets say there, they're identical for both projects, is talk about a project overview in general, maybe show a little location map, talk about some conceptual alternatives, we wanna display some factors that we'll be considering in determining our options once we get to the alignments and whatnot. And lastly, we wanna look at a timeline where we are now and where we're gonna be in the future. As you know, these projects have been in the books for a long time, and to get a project from the cradle to grave takes a lot of coordination and a lot of cooperation. So it starts with the City of Socorro, and of course, we need tech side oversight also, so we have buy-ins from different agencies like IBWC, FEMA, irrigation districts, and of course, the overall, the public. Arterial 1, if you notice, there's also like Jose mentioned, 1682 Boulevard. Now I'm from McAllen, Texas, so I'm not too familiar with the goings in and out of Socorro, but I was interested to find out that the 1682 is a very significant year, it's actually when the Isleta del Sur Tribal Government built the Corpus Christi de la Isleta Mission in 1682. That is considered to be the first mission in Texas. It's also recognized as the first community in Texas, so I thought that was pretty interesting. The limits of our project are from I-10 to FM 28, 258, which is Socorro Road in El Paso County.
TechStop conducted Border Highway East Planning and Environmental Linkages Study, and that was completed in August of 2015. The study developed conceptual solutions for connecting I-10 to Loop 375 and to address future traffic demands. Well, that ties into our project because this PEL study established that Arterial 1 is needed to address congestion and lack of connecting roadways throughout the region. Three series of public meetings were held to present the PEL alternative to the public between 2013 and 2014. And if you look to the right on the map, we have a callout that has a red arrow that shows Arterial 1, the one that was chosen from the PEL study. This alternative is carried forward into our project to expand further on it and to look at different issues that may be presented from that alternative. The purpose and need of our project is to provide improved mobility and connectivity in the region providing, by providing an east-west connection. And we wanted to show you just a general map, this is the area that we're talking about between I-10 and Socorro Road, and just to give you an idea, you know, high level overview of what our study area looks like.
Yeah, as far as what it's gonna look like, this is a slide, this slide depicts what it will be, it will be a four-lane divided highway with a 16-foot raised median. If you notice, there's bike lanes on both sides, there are five-foot bike lanes, and we're allowing for a three-foot buffer. There's also a sidewalk behind, six feet away from the face of the curb on both sides. All of this will be in 110-foot right-of-way.
And we're early in the process right now, that's why we're coming to you as we are, we have not held a public meeting, but right now, we're identifying the purpose and need and we're initiating the viable alternative analysis, and we're undergoing stakeholder coordination with you and the county and some other representatives before we go to the public, and that will be later this spring. And this just shows that we are in the beginning and we're trying to coordinate and involve everybody as soon as possible.
As far as engineering constraints, you know, there's a lot of them, but the major ones that we're gonna look at in particular are bridges, there are several bridges along this section of highway, starting at Socorro Road where you have the Sala Altrada lateral, just north of Socorro Road. Then as you get to SH 20, Alameda, there's the Franklin Canal which has historical significance. One of the major bridges that we're gonna have to entertain here is also the bridge over the Union Pacific Railroad Crossing. That's an overpass that no doubt will lead to a pretty high cost, but it's something that's necessary, and so we won't have an ad-grade intersection there. And as far as 100-year floodplains, we will be looking at that. There are two different types of floodplains that we know of right now, there's the effective floodplain, which is basically what's being used right now for all your flood insurance maps and what have you, and then there's the preliminary floodplains, which FEMA is working on. We need to look at both of those because they are very different, and we need to see when the preliminary floodplains become effective. As far as construction costs, you know, we, like Kim mentioned, it's very preliminary in the project right now, but we will be using some cost per mile, if we can, we'll get some trite quantities once we get an alignment, but we'll be using these costs for comparison purposes only between the different alignments that we will come up with. Utility impacts is always very important, we need to consider any major water and gas lines that are going through there. So currently, we started looking at some files that were made available to us either by the City of Socorro or some maps that we found online that we can get some preliminary information without actual survey. And the last three bullets, right-of-way parcel and structure impacts are definitely something that everybody's interested in, and we will be taking a hard look at that.
In addition to the engineering constraints, we will be looking at environmental constraints as well, whether the viable alternatives meet the purpose and need for the project. We also will listen to and incorporate stakeholder and public comments. We also wanna look at the human environment, in addition to the relocation possibility and right-of-way, we wanna look at cultural resources, properties and landowners, the communities, including low-income minority and environmental justice communities, we're gonna look at hazmat materials, and also air quality and noise impacts. Then in addition to that, we're gonna look at the natural environment like water resources and biological resources.
As far as the project timeline, you know, we received, and I say we, I mean Danenbaum Engineering received, they noticed to proceed from the City of Socorro back in September of 2020, there were a little over 1,200 working days on the contract, so as you can see, it's a pretty lengthy process that we're gonna go through. The alternative analysis, you can see there, goes all the way through the summer of 2021, that's where we want to get into some alternatives and have some kind of public involvement where we can proceed, then once we get the public comments, we can proceed to the design phase. And of course, environmental process is a long process, we're thinking it'll be two years, but sometimes it may be more than that, that's always something that takes probably the most time. And as we begin looking at different alignment options, we also plan to have a public meeting in August of this year. And of course, lastly, I don't know if you can see it on the screen there, but the letting date is, we're hoping that we will get a letting date of late 2024. The next project is a Nuevo Wecco Tanks project, the limits of this project are from SH 20, Alameda Drive to FM 76, this project is about one mile. Of course, this ties into the old Wecco Tanks Road that was built about three years ago from I-10 to FM 76, that project was 1.25, five miles. So as you can see, when this one is constructed, you'll have about a little over two-mile stretch of highway that I think is much needed in the area.
And once again, just like Arterial 1, there's some studies that have been conducted already on this project. Nuevo Wecco Tanks Road feasibility study was conducted and was completed in February 2021 of this year by TechStop, and the idea of that one was to provide improved connectivity and access by offering an alternative route parallel to Loop 375 and FM 1281, which is also Horizon Boulevard. From that study came a recommended technically preferred alternative, which we are carrying forward and considering in our current project process. The study limits from that study though, were from Win Road to FM 76 or North Loop Drive, and our project is from SH 20 or Alameda to North Loop Drive to the east. The purpose and need of our project is to provide improved The purpose and need of our project is to provide improved mobility in the region by providing east-west connectivity. And here's a, excuse me, here's a map of the, this TechStop study alternative. As you can see, it was from Wind Road to FM seventy-six, and ours will be shorter, you know, it will end at SH twenty. And then, this is also a general study area, like I showed for, just to give you guys an idea of where we're looking.
As far as the typical section, it's very similar to the Arterial One that we presented earlier slides. It still has a four-lane divided highway, it has the bike lanes with a three-foot buffer. The only difference is that the sidewalks will be adjacent to the curb. This differs a little bit from the old Waco Tanks Road that was constructed in that, I believe there, there was only a six-foot bike lane and there wasn't a buffer. So we feel that this will provide a little bit more room between the bicyclists and the traveling public. And again, we want to use, all this will be, you can't see it there, but it's also in a hundred-and-ten-foot right-of-way footprint.
And once again, we're in the same early part of the process. We are just now identifying alternatives, and we're coming out to our stakeholders, but we also are going to have a public meeting soon, and Carlos will talk about that in a minute.
Yeah, and again, within engineering constraints, as far as Nuevo Waco Tanks goes, there aren't as many bridges as our Arterial One, but we still have the Franklin Canal that we may need to consider if the project extends anywhere south of SH twenty, if we need to. Of course, you still have the Union Pacific Railroad, which runs through both projects, and we have the, a lateral bridge just south of FM seventy-six that we need to consider either replacement, widening, or, or raising the profile of that. The hundred-year floodplain, it's not affected, good, you know, it's good that it's not affected for this project on the effective. If, like I mentioned before, the, the preliminary floodplain is approved in the near future, then, then it could be that, that it might, may, may affect the project. As far as construction costs, you know, again, we're gonna look at construction costs, and right at the, at the moment, we're considering concrete pavement, because I think that's probably pretty standard there in El Paso, but we will also get, provide alternatives when the come, when the time comes for asphalt concrete pavement, because there will be a cost difference there. But we will be looking at construction costs for comparable capabilities. And utility is the same thing, they're always major, so we'll be looking at those, just with the same maps that we have, the information on Arterial One, we have the same maps here for Waco Tanks, and likely, right-of-way parcel structure impacts will be definitely considered. This being a one-mile stretch, a lot less than Arterial One, which is a little less than four miles, you know, we're hoping to have a little bit less impact.
And the same for environmental. We're looking at the purpose and need of each alternative, again, stakeholder and public comments, but because it's a shorter alignment, we hope to have fewer impacts. We also, one thing I didn't mention in the last presentation, we ought, want to be aware of impacts of farmland. We have cultural resources, properties and landowners, communities, including, again, low-income minority and environmental justice populations. Hazmat is potential, also air quality and noise, and the natural environment, water resources and biology, and we also want to make sure, we, we have the canals, as Carlos mentioned, we want to make sure we don't impact, because it's a national register of historic districts, we want to minimize impacts to those structures.
Yeah, the timeline, you know, we also received a notice to proceed from the city of Socorro back in September of 2020. We have over a thousand working days on this contract. And as we begin looking at the alignment options, we're looking to have a public meeting in July. It's possible that we may not need a public meeting, we're still not sure on that, but ultimately, we want to look, we're looking at a letting date at sometime in, in 2024, just like the Arterial One pro, uh, project. And the ones that are gonna take the most time, as you can see, the environmental process, of course, and, and the design.
Thank you, Carlos, and I just want to point out that, you know, I know it seems like a long timeline, but we do have to follow all the federal guidelines, this project, which is in PUCDIPA, so environmental is, is one of the key components of the project, so we have to, to make sure we follow all guidelines that are set out by the federal government in order to get this project complete. This concludes the presentation, but if you all have any questions, you can feel free to call any of the people you see on the screen, Christian Wong with TechStop, he's a PM for TechStop, TechStop is providing oversight on the project and service of federal funds in the, in the project. Ms. Larte, she can also, you can contact her, she, she'll be able to direct you to the right person as well, she's familiar with this project, and, and for myself, I'm the project manager for Danenbaum Engineering. Feel free to call me or, or send an email, and we can see, we can answer your questions. But that concludes our, our presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
I don't know if, if council have any questions from, from us, we'd be happy to have any questions.
I have a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Perez?
Uh, thank you. Mr. Reyes, thank you for the presentation, and Ms. Johnson, thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to ask, and, and as far as, I know that we're very, very early in the stages of, of the project, but I just am concerned, in terms of, and, and this goes back to the overall quality and finish of the project, I'm noticing that, that the Nuevo Waco Tanks Road, parts of it are starting to be, show its age already, unfortunately, and it's a very new corridor, and so I was just wondering what steps will be done or taken as we proceed with this, again, very early stages, to make sure that we have a, some kind of quality control for those projects?
Well, we, we, we'd all try to design a project with the, the best, highest quality, durability, using concrete paving. And I know that project was designed by TechStop actually, and it's constructed by RMA. I'm not familiar with the, I guess, the particular issue you're talking about, but if you can let us know, we can look at it and make sure that we don't, we haven't repeated those issues, but, you know, concrete paving is the, the, I guess, the pavement, the material that will require at least maintenance on the streets of Socorro, but, but we do, you know, that's very important to us, to make sure you have a, a, a project that would require a little maintenance as, as possible.
All right, because again, as, as you traveled up and down that, that corridor, you have areas where the, the cement, the, the stamped cement, the stamped concrete, is already lifting and those kinds of things, and those are things that, I mean, it's a significant investment, and that happens, and that's, you know, kind of disappointing. And again, I know we're, we're very early in the project, and I apologize for my dogs, I apologize, but, you know, it's just one of those things that I would like to, to see remedy even.
I, I, I will, we'll do some investigation on that and see what we can do to make sure this doesn't occur. I, I, I'm curious to see what you're, what you're referring to, but we will look at it and see what we can do to make sure that this does not occur on these projects.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Mayor, we do have a speaker for this item, Renee Rodriguez.
Uh, Mr. Perez, that was a good question. That's what I opposed to Danenbaum when we were doing this at the MPO. This was initially, was not in the twenty forty-five destino plan, which is a plan from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, I mean, to twenty forty-five. It wasn't there, it took us a lot to push it in there, and then move it from the twenty forty-five year to now, where, or last year, where we started to make this project come to fruition. One of the things is, is that this is a great opportunity, you know, we have Danenbaum that, that we hired years ago, they had nothing to do with the, the old Waco Tanks, so the engineering that they're doing is gonna be better, because, if you notice, sand is creeping in between the, the median and the, and the curb, and it's pushing it out. I mean, those are things that I, I have addressed with them about a, a year ago or so. Good thing that you brought it up so that they can get a refresher, because those are engineering things that, we know what went wrong with this one, so the, the, the engineering, which Danenbaum is very good at, will, will do a better, better engineering than what we received in the first time. That was done before even our time, so all we did back then is, is approve it, put the money to, to get the, the land acquisition, and then move the project forward. Now that this one's done, I hope that you guys move forward into these projects, because it's very needed, and people drive in, there's still a lot of congestion.
Mr. Rodriguez, your time is up.
Thank you. Moving on, item number twenty-five. Discussion and action on approving the issuance of the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty annual financial report by SBNG Certified Public Accountants.
Motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We do have Mr. Teo Cabrera from our auditing firm to provide your presentation regarding our fiscal year twenty twenty fiscal year audit.
Hello there, thank you very much for the introduction. Nice to meet you virtually, members of the council, happy to hear you here this afternoon. I also have with me, from our office, our lead auditor, our senior auditor, Alejandra Garcia. Alejandra and myself, we were in charge of completing the audit for Socorro for this year's, for this year's results. So I'm, in, in the screen, you should be seeing some slides that will help you go through the presentation. Members of council, you should also have a copy of the audit report in your agenda packet, and I will be going over the financial statements in the slides, and I'll be indicating some of the pages, so you can follow the presentation. I will try to make the presentation brief, however, if there's a matter that you would like to discuss in more detail, please feel free to ans, ask any questions. I'll be happy to revisit anything or expand on anything on the audit report, so you can understand the, the results of the audit and the recommendations in the report itself. I'll start by saying that this year's audit was very smooth. We don't have any audit findings, right? And we are happy to issue a unmodified report, which I'll explain briefly what that means. But nonetheless, I mean, we, we were very comfortable with the, the condition in which we're finding accounting records, the internal controls, even in, you know, during this unusual COVID time, of course, there were some adjustments that the city needed to make in order to make sure that we have proper segregation duties, proper controls, and, you know, part of, big part of the audit is trying to get comfortable with those internal controls and evaluating certain risks, right? And I, I am happy to say that we didn't find, you know, an, anything that we consider to be, you know, a weakness in internal control, or anything that we consider to be a fraud or abuse. It was challenging year for most entities, governments and non-governments, but nonetheless, as you will find throughout the presentation, the city managed to end the fiscal year in a slightly better financial position than what it started. So the first thing I would get is through the five-year trend analysis, and of course, we have the statement of net position. If you're following the financial statements, that is on page five, page five is the statement of net position. Also a balance sheet, I mean, if you're used to seeing financial statements, this is essentially a balance sheet. So we have the total assets, which is everything the city owns, including infrastructure and roads and streets. We have liabilities, which is everything that the city is liable for, so mainly long-term debt, bonds, and also amounts that are due to vendors at the end of the year. And, and the difference between assets and liabilities, that's the city's net worth, right? So the city ended the fiscal year, and just so you are not familiar, the, the fiscal year for the city ends in September, so these numbers are the numbers at the end of September thirty, twenty twenty. We have sixty million dollars, which is a, a slight increase in total assets of two percent, and the liabilities are thirty-one million dollars, so you can see that we have more than half in assets than what we have in liabilities. The liabilities decreased by three percent, so essentially, the city's net worth did increase by eight percent. This is, this is a favorable result, like, from a, from a financial perspective. When the net position increases, it means that from an economic perspective, the, the city ended the year in a better position. So as you can see, there was a modest increase i, in a year that was very uncertain, of course, right? If we go to the next slide, we can talk a little bit more of what's in the balance sheet. Always like to talk a little bit more in detail about the cash position, because that's, that, that really tells us a lot of where we are, cash, and, and in this case, also investments. That's the city's most important asset, right, because that's what's available to spend. So the city's ending the year with different categories of cash, there's one-point-two million dollars in cash, but there's also restricted cash, which is money that has been set aside for construction, or as a cash reserve, right? And then, interestingly, in, in, in the fiscal year of twenty twenty, something that is different, that in other years, is that the city actually put more money towards different investment accounts, right? The investments that the city have are, are fairly conservative, right? The city's not investing in derivatives or any, any kind of risky securities. As a matter of fact, the, the investments are basically all intergovernmental government pools, which is almost like a money market account, so it has a very low risk, and, and as you can see, a big, a big proportion of the city's liquidity is, is in there, and these investments are pretty flexible if the liquidity is needed. Another big item that we're seeing in the balance sheet is infrastructure and equipment, right? So that's a little bit more, you know, it's a little bit more conceptual, it's a little bit harder to understand and to explain, but really what this is, was forty-three million dollars, that's how much the city has invested or spent in roads, and, and equipment, and vehicles, and furniture, and office equipment, you know, throughout its existence, right? So that's the remaining amount in infrastructure, and that amount actually increased from the previous year. There was a jump of about two million dollars in, in total equipment and infrastructure, right? So it's what we expect to see. In twenty twenty, there was not as much construction going on as in other years, and understandably, because of COVID, a lot of things were placed on hold or slowed down or delayed in terms of infrastructure projects. But the big project that was completed was, in, in the fiscal year, was the Onion Field renovation, which had a, a cost of approximately one-point-seven million dollars, which is being added on to this infrastructure line item, right? The other item that's very important here in, in the balance sheet, if you've seen the balance sheet, is bonds, right? Long-term liabilities, how much is owed? That amount is twenty-nine million dollars, and it remained very comparable to the previous year. Something to mention is that during twenty twenty, the city actually refinanced three of its outstanding individual bond notes into a single bond, right? With the hopes of a saving on interest rate, right? So not a surprise, I mean, obviously, every, everybody knows that twenty twenty was a year of very low interest rate, and, and you see the city here, you know, trying to take advantage of that favorable situation and, and refinancing some of the bonds, right? And that's not the first time that the city has refinanced bonds, we've seen it a few years before as well. So those are the highlights for, for the balance sheet. If we move to the next slide, and now we're in a different page in the financial statements, page six, this is the statement of activities, right? So this explains the revenues and the expenses for the year. Total revenue or total money that was brought into the city was fourteen million dollars, and, and total money that was recorded as an expense is twelve million dollars, right? So you see that the revenue is exceeding the expenses by two million dollars, which essentially means that we brought in more money than we spent, right? However, keep in mind that what is, what, what's spent in roads and infrastructure is not reflected as an expense, right? That's reflected in the balance sheet. So we did have more revenues and, than expenses, but we spent some of that excess money, or most of that excess money, in roads and bridges, as you can see. So from a cash perspective, the city is more or less in the same place where we were in the previous fiscal year. Now, if we move to the next slide, have a little more information on, on the revenues and the expenses themselves, right? So the most important source of revenue for the city, it, it continues to be property tax revenue, right? And that's what we expect to see, but that's in line with all the other municipalities here in, in the El Paso area. The city collected a total of nine point two million dollars in property taxes, and that pays about sixty-five percent of the expenses for the city's budget. For two thousand and twenty, the ad valorem rate was eighty-three cents for every hundred dollars that a property is worth, right? And that rate actually did increase a little bit from the previous audit cycle. In the previous audit cycle, it was at seventy-five cents, right? So, we see less than a ten percent jump in the property tax rate. And the actual collection, so the money that actually came in, was about fifteen percent more than the previous year, right? So, the revenue increased at a higher rate than what the property tax rate increased, right? And of course, it's because we have some delinquent payments and we have some other fees coming in. But nonetheless, we see a positive trend, an increase in revenue. The other important line item is going to be sales taxes. And sales taxes are interesting because they're, not only are they revenue for the city, right, but they represent eight percent of, or really for the city, it's more like two percent of the total sales that are generated in the city's jurisdiction, right? So, the city collected one point five million dollars, and that's another fifteen percent jump from the previous year. So, it's pretty safe to say that as a whole, revenues for commerces in the city's jurisdiction increased by that fifteen percent, right? In a year, again, in which we were dealing with COVID. So, we have two positive trends. And last but not least, another important source of revenue are federal and state grants. And in the year that we audited, the total federal and state grants were half a million dollars. And, you know, a big part of that amount consisted of COVID-nineteen funds that were provided through the county of El Paso. Now, in the year two thousand and twenty-one, the city is expected to spend up to an additional one point three million dollars, right, from this particular COVID grant. So, this is going to be an area of focus for the audit in the next fiscal year, in the fiscal year that we are currently in. So, that would be something that would be changing the scope of the requirements for the next file, for the next audit. In the next slide, we talk a little bit about the expenses, and we're still on page six. Don't worry, we won't go page by page. Most of the information is at the beginning. Page six, again, we're talking a little bit about the expenses. We have them by department. The biggest department is the police department at four million dollars, which is, again, typical. Normally, the police department is the biggest department. We have infrastructure at three point seven. We have government administration of one point eight. There's some interest expense, and there's also depreciation expense, which is a non-cash expense. It's just the write-off of our, the way how our buildings are being written off throughout their useful life. So, a couple of things to mention. The police department did increase its workforce. Most of the other departments remain fairly flat in terms of their workforce, in terms of the salary expense. However, COVID expenditures were present in all the departments, right? Most of those COVID expenditures were covered by our COVID grant. And as a whole, the total expenditures for the city increased by approximately ten percent. Again, our revenues increased by approximately fifteen percent. So, we see a surplus there in as far as how our numbers are changing. If we go to the following page, or the following slide as well. We can go to page seven in the financial statements, if you're following that. In page seven, it just shows a little bit more detail of the individual funds. And really, what each fund means is that the city has a general fund, which is where the operations are being ran or accounted for. And then, we have other funds. We have one fund for debt. We have one fund for construction. We have two funds for grants. And this presentation does not include long-term items, right? It only includes current items. And you can see on the following slide, a comparison of all the funds. The general fund, which is the most, I'm sorry, if you could go back one slide. The following fund has, the current slide has the different funds. General fund is the most important one. We have eight million dollars there. Fund balance is six million dollars. So, we have very healthy fund balance. And you can see how the general fund actually had a surplus. The only fund that had a negative result was the capital improvements funds, and that only means that we were spending the money that has been set aside for construction, right? That's the only thing that that means, and that's what we expect to see on that fund. Last but not least, for the five-year trend, the five-year trend in the following slide will show a summary of some of the key metrics over the last five years. We see a year-over-year increase in property tax revenue with a bigger jump in two thousand and twenty. Luckily, we also see that sales taxes is increasing year-over-year. Grant revenue was very high in two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen. There were some really big infrastructure jobs that were completed. In two thousand and twenty, we're back to what we normally receive. Two thousand and twenty-one, we expect to see more tech stock money coming in, so that number should be increasing again. Infrastructure, you can see how in the last five years, we went from having twenty-one million dollars to forty-three million dollars. So, the amount that has been spent on infrastructure has doubled over five years. So, that's really good sign there. Hopefully, that's transmitted into increasing property values and increasing commercial activity. Long-term debt has also increased, but at a smaller pace than infrastructure. And total assets, again, increasing. Total cash has decreased, but it's mainly because of the money that has been moved to an investment account. So, that's the five-year analysis right there. The next slide, it's just a quick highlight of the audit, and as I had mentioned, we are providing an unmodified opinion, which essentially means that the financial statements, as you're seeing them, are fairly stated, and we don't have any departures from accounting principles or any material mistakes that we believe need to be made or corrected. So, it is a clean opinion. It is the best opinion. And as I mentioned earlier, we did not have any issues with internal controls that we felt compelled to report as a finding, nor did we become aware of fraud or abuse. So, that's really, it's basically no news is good news in this case. Also, we're required to look at changes in accounting policies. Two thousand and twenty, there was no changes in accounting policies implemented. There was essentially a blanket, a blanket extension for all changes in accounting standards. Every year, there's at least one or two changes in accounting standards. And because of the pandemic, the governing body that regulates these rules just issued a blanket extension, so we don't have to worry about any changes to accounting rules for two thousand and twenty. And then, of course, a lot of the numbers that we see are based on estimates, which we evaluate as part of the audit, and we feel comfortable with how those estimates were calculated, right? So, we don't have any corrections to that. The only recommendation in the last slide is for the city to revisit its investment policy, as I had mentioned earlier in the presentation. The city normally held a lot of its funds in plain checking accounts, bank accounts. In two thousand and twenty, we saw a shift in that. We see that a lot of the funds are being held now in an intergovernmental investment pool, which is essentially a money market account. So, we just want to make sure that the investment policy reflects that and that the board evaluates this, the commissioners, I'm sorry, evaluate this on an annual basis to make sure that everybody is comfortable with the investment strategy of the city. And this is a requirement by the Texas Public Funds Act that this policy is at least revisited or ratified every year. It has to be in your minutes. It's in action at least once a year. And that's essentially it. The last slide here is my contact information, also Joanne Nugent. Joanne Nugent is the CPA that is in charge of signing the report, and I'm the one that's in charge of planning the audit and supervising the work. So, if there's any questions from the council members or the management of the city or any other, anybody else in the audience, I'll be happy to answer any questions at this moment.
Mr. Perez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Cabrera, thank you for the presentation. Just a minor detail on page one of the principal officials. Mr. Cesar Nevades is the current mayor pro temp. He was the mayor pro temp for two thousand and twenty, and so that would be a correction that would need to be made.
Sounds good. We will revise that accordingly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Cabrera.
Thank you very much for your time and for the opportunity to work with the City of Socorro. We feel really pleased to have delivered this service to you, and we hope to stay in touch and remain in contact with you throughout the rest of the year. Thank you.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevades? Mr. Nevades is absent. Ralph Thudan?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Hi.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos? Ms. Villalobos?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Moving on to mayor and council, item number twenty-six. Presentation, discussion and action to approve Synaroid Technologies Bring a Pilot Program Bring My Pet Home Campaign to the City of Socorro.
Motion to approve for discussion?
Second.
And I believe we have a video?
Yeah.
One moment, please.
This is Harry. This is Buddy. One out of three pets will go missing in their lifetime or ten million pets each year.
Give us a second. We're having technical problems. Apologize.
Less than half will make it back home. When your pet goes missing, time is of the essence. GPC Smart has devised a modern solution to quickly and easily reunite you with your lost pet. It's called the GPC Smart Safety Tag. With the GPC Smart Safety Tag, whoever finds your pet automatically retrieve the pet's profile by tapping the NFC or scanning the QR code on the back of the tag using your smartphone's camera. The profile contains owner and emergency contacts, as well as current vaccination records and other valuable information. Profiles can also be accessed. This is Harry. This is Buddy. One out of three pets will go missing in their lifetime or ten million pets each year. Less than half will make it back home. When your pet goes missing, time is of the essence. GPC Smart has devised a modern solution to quickly and easily reunite you with your lost pet. It's called the GPC Smart Safety Tag. With the GPC Smart Safety Tag, whoever finds your pet automatically retrieve the pet's profile by tapping the NFC or scanning the QR code on the back of the tag using your smartphone's camera. The profile contains owner and emergency contacts, as well as current vaccination records and other valuable information. Profiles can also be accessed by visiting our website and by typing in the unique serial ID as shown under the QR code. GPC Smart sends out a notification that someone has found your pet, and you'll be reunited with your pet in no time. It's the fastest and simplest recovery method possible. Pet owners can have the comfort of being able to reunite with their pet anywhere in the world. Stay connected with the GPC Smart Safety Tag. Our tag is your pet's ticket home.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We do have Leanna Jones, in case we have any questions. I know that staff has a couple of questions, but they're calling it a whole new movement. So, they were pitching a pilot program for the City of Socorro. We do know that most of our residents don't take advantage of the microchip that is offered to them through the City of El Paso to be able to track their pets. So, we were thinking of creating different ideas or different programs to make sure that we touch the residents, you know, in another way to be able to bring their pets home. Ms. Jones, I don't know if you have anything that you want to add?
Yeah, so we actually have myself and Katie Shannon on the call as well. But yeah, I mean, the video and your intro, I think they really cover very well, but essentially, it's a tag that will be given out to those that live in your municipality, and it's really easy to use. All you do is you scan it with your smartphone device, or you can type in the serial number on your computer. So, for those that may not have a smartphone, they still have a way to access that information. So, the overall goal is to get pets back in their homes before they end up in animal control.
Mayor, I do know that Mr. Rita had, you know, we brainstormed and had a set of questions for them.
Great. Yeah, that's awesome. Go ahead, Mr. Rita.
Thank you, Chief. So, really quickly, I just had a couple of questions regarding the tag itself. If my animal, let's say, for example, loses their collar and I need to get a replacement tag, what is the cost for the actual replacement of that tag? And is there any membership fee that's needed to be a part of this program or service?
The cost for a replacement tag is two dollars and ninety-nine cents, and there are no ongoing or recurring subscription fees that are required.
I know, thank you for that. I know in our area, we do have connectivity issues regarding internet service. So, in the rural areas, have you seen high success with this program?
Yes, so, sorry. So, with the serial number being on the tag as well as the QR and NFC, it really, it helps touch in all areas that you are able to pull up that pet's information. So, again, any phone with a camera, smartphone with a camera, or you can type in the serial number on a computer to look it up that way, too. So, if there is an area that doesn't have very good cell phone reception, you can still use a computer to access the data.
Awesome. Additionally, we do have a large military family base here in Socorro. So, if we, if a fellow member ends up moving with their animal, how easy is it to go on the app and update your information?
Incredibly easy. So, all you do is you'll access the app, and you just simply type in the updated information, and that, that's really one of the key components here, because with the metal tags, if you have an address or phone number engraved and you move, you have to, you know, put forth a good bit of effort to get that changed. Whereas with these tags, you just go on the app and you type in your updated information. You can update vet records, update photos of your pet, as well as your personal information as well.
Thank you. My last question is, is this software available in Spanish or is it only in English?
For the first release, it's only available in English currently, but we are looking at adding up to seven languages in the near future as well, and Spanish is going to be the next language that we add.
A follow-up to that would be regarding the actual device itself. The material that it's made out of, is it easily destroyed by animals? How heavy-duty is the actual tag itself? Just because I do have large animals, so I know how easily my Great Dane can destroy something.
The tag is made out of a highly durable plastic resin. I've actually been testing it on my own dogs for the last two years. I have a search-and-rescue dog, so I've ran him through all sorts of different terrain, mud, dirt. There are no electronic components in the tag itself, and it's waterproof and dustproof. The tags look the same, they look the same as the day we put them on. They don't wear or etch like a metal tag will. The only way that they could be destroyed is if an animal actually potentially chewed them. But they are very lightweight, and they're similar to like a, like a carbon fiber.
Awesome. Thank you for that.
Any other questions? Mr. Reyes?
I was just gonna ask about the, how many tags does every household get?
So, so it's actually not per household, it's just per pet. Yeah, so if you, if you have three dogs, it's one per, one per animal, or cat.
Okay, but you pay for, no, you get the first one and then you pay for any additional, or how would that work?
So as part of the pilot program, we will actually give tags to the city to distribute to the citizens that have pets. So it's, it's whatever amount that, that you guys will decide on that, that you would like to have to do the initial distribution.
Thank you.
Mr. Duran?
I see a problem with the, with not having them in Spanish. Because the majority of the people live in Socorro, Spanish is their first language. And it's, you're gonna run into a lot of people that don't understand it, and you're gonna have to have everything in Spanish for it to be a success in Socorro.
Thank you for that feedback. I will take that back to the development team, and I will follow up with an update as to when we're looking at having additional languages released with the app itself.
Mr. Perez?
Thank you. Again, just for clarification. In terms of costs, the initial, let's say, you know, I have three dogs in my household. So what would be the, the price point for me in terms of, of having three dogs? How would that work? What, what is the schedule for that?
So with the pilot project, we're going to work with the city to come up with a number of tags that you will need for initial distribution to serve your citizens and their pets. So if you have three dogs, you would get three tags for, for those animals. And then any additional tags after the end of the pilot program, if you wanted to purchase more, they're at $2.99.
So, so then, follow-up question then. So then, over the lifetime of the program, if, if my tags are durable, then it would be just that initial investment of $2? Or again, there are no subsequent fees or costs or dues to, to maintain that, correct?
Correct. With the pilot program, we're going to guarantee pricing. So there'll be no initial cost for the tags that are included under the pilot program that will last a year. And then if you choose to purchase tags after that, it's $2.99 per tag. Or if somebody were to lose a tag and needed to replace it, they would be required to purchase the tag for that replacement.
Thank you.
Ms. Rulatte, did you have a question?
Not a question, just if council does approve this, we plan to have an event at our recreation department and invite our residents, and also have computers available to assist those individuals that are not tech savvy or need assistance because they don't speak English or don't understand it. So we, we will have like this huge event trying to promote and getting our pets back home.
Any other questions? Mr. Reyes?
I guess one, I guess one last question. How many tags is the city getting?
We'll work with everybody to come up with a number that, that you're, that, I'm sorry, that you're, can use for the distribution. One of the questions that we have is how you plan to distribute them. So if it's going to be for a one-time event, how many tags that would be? Or if you need them on like a recurring basis, if you're adopting your animals, or if you have a license program where you're using a certain number every month or every quarter, we'll work with you to determine what that number is, so that we can make sure that we have enough tags to service your needs.
Yes, so before we answer that, we wanted to see if, if council, if this was something that council wanted to adopt. And we would go out and get information from the animal shelter and animal control services to kind of gear ourselves to see how many pets we have in our city, so we can ask for the number of tags.
Mr. Duran?
Will this also coordinate with the chips that, that the animals have on them, too?
Yes, it does. One of the benefits of the tag is visible identification that's easily seen, and you don't have to take an animal to a vet to scan them for the microchip. But there is a field in the animal's profile that's connected to the tag where you can put in the microchip number as well. So it has another place to be able to read that microchip number and match it to the pet.
Any other questions? Comments? Mr. Reyes?
I was just gonna say thank you for the presentation, for your time.
I just wanted to make a comment before we, we end here with the, with this, with this item. I know a lot of animals go to the pound, and we get that very often where our pets go missing. So sometimes what happens is that they go to the pound and there's not enough space. So they give you a timeframe sometimes, and they do away with the animal. So it might be your pet that's next. So this program will alleviate some of the pets, you know, being out in wherever. So think about it, it could be your, your pet next.
Mr. Duran?
Is the animal control going to be brought in on this, too? So that they can coordinate with you all with regards to reading the information that's on there and trying to get the pets relocated to their owner?
Yes. Ms. Villalobos?
Well, I for one love the, the project. I'm an animal lover. I live in a farm. And so far, I have three dogs, and luckily, I've never lost one. But I am part of a group on Facebook, and I'm constantly like daily, on hour by hour, posting somebody's dog that is lost. Hopefully, we could, you know, find them. So for me, this program is heaven sent, especially here in Socorro. So thank you, ladies. And thank you for everybody that researched it, looked it up, and made that initial call.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevades? Is absent Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Absolutely, yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you for, so much for having us.
Item number 27, Discussion and Action to Accept the Resignation of Commissioner Miriam Cruz to the Ethics Commission, Place Four.
Motion to accept resignation?
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevades? Is absent Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes.
Item number 28. Discussion and Action to Approve the Appointment of Miriam Cruz to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Place Five.
I'm moved.
Motion to approve for discussion?
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevades? Is absent Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos?
Yes. Congratulations, Ms. Miriam.
Thank you. I think the motion was made to discuss. I just want to make sure that I was actually appointed.
No, I want to change my motion to approve.
Item number 29, Swearing In of Newly Appointed Commissioner?
Madam Mayor, before we proceed, just for clarification, I think the, the motion was discussion and action. I, I, so, so I think it was appropriate, right?
I believe he changed his, his motion to approve.
And that's what it was stated. No, that, that's my understanding.
Correct, sir. So the motion was to approve for discussion? So there was no discussion, so they passed the vote to approve it.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And now we have the swearing in of newly appointed commissioner.
Welcome, Mr. Nunez.
Good afternoon, everyone.
I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, council members. May I begin?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Miriam, would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me?
Yes.
I, Miriam Cruz.
I, Miriam Cruz.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Socorro, Texas.
Of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Socorro, Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state.
The Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state.
Congratulations, Commissioner. And now we go to the second oath. Please repeat after me. I, Miriam Cruz.
I, Miriam Cruz.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid.
Offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute.
Offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value.
Any money or thing of value.
Or promised any public or employment.
Or promised any public or employment.
As reward to secure my appointment or confirmation thereof.
As reward to secure my appointment or confirmation thereof.
Congratulations, Ms. Cruz.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Reyes, and, and all council members. Thank you. And thank you, Judge Nunez, for being here and being patient. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I be excused, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Judge.
Y'all have a good night.
Likewise. Later, Ruben.
Bye-bye.
Moving on to presentations. Item number five, Workshop and Discussion and Action on Approving Capital Improvements Items for the Capital Program.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have attached the backup that gives you the spreadsheet that was provided last year from Mr. Medina. Once you go through that worksheet, I want to share a more recent spreadsheet, sorry. Can you all see the spreadsheet? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this spreadsheet is giving you the actual capital outlay that we have for the city for the next five years with the COs that we took out in 2019, which was a total of $10 million. These are the projects that the city is currently working. On the first row, you, you see the name of the project, and then you see the actual amount. And on the actual spent 2020 to 2021, that'll tell you the projects that have been completed and have already occurred. Okay, so this worksheet consists of our infrastructure, our Socorro sidewalks, the striping, parking lots for the Rio Vista, the street overlays that we had approved, our TechStud projects, the machinery and equipment that we have, that we're in need of within the next five years. We have structures, which is our mechanic shop hut, Rio Vista rehabilitation, and our police modular, which has already been completed, as you can see. We also have some security updates that we need from the, for the municipal courts. We have land acquisition that has occurred through the S-curve of South Nevades, and that's tied into a project for TechStud. So as you can see in the very end of the second page, you see the totals. So we have projects that accumulated $20 million. We have actually spent 3.8. For COs 2019, we did receive $10 million. We have actually spent the 3.8. We plan to spend the 2021, 2022, 7.3 million dollars, which we would be in the negative. But I do want to add that we are pending the rescue infrastructure funds that are coming from Biden's administration. So a lot of the projects, we just have not received the stipulations of what projects we can do with that funding. Please know that we will try to use that funding for any type of infrastructure that we're allowed to before we use our capital funding. So I do want to show you. On this next list, it shows you the projects that we have that are currently work, that we're currently working on. So we're still street overlaying right now. I do know that we have Meldmonte Vida, San Isidro Place Road, and those streets are getting ready to be paved. So this is just an estimation of what we think will cost to complete the paving list that was approved. We have the Passmore Share Path that we've been working on with TechStud. We also have the Bovi Bridge Extensions off of Alameda. I do know that we will be coming to council because there is going to have to be some type of land acquisition. So I have to capture those in this capital. The engineering services, then we have the mechanic shop hut. And we have these projects that we want to fulfill this coming year. The biggest ones is your onion field excavation and your local share for our TechStud projects. That's just how aggressive we want to be. Doesn't mean that we're going to spend them this year. However, I do want to be as transparent as we can be to the public and capture those costs within our capital. That way, it doesn't hit us, I guess, by surprise. We know exactly what, you know, the projects that we're currently working on. I don't know if you all have any questions. This is our first workshop. There will be a second workshop at our next meeting, correct? At that point, you might want to cancel some projects and do other projects. I do know that we have Mayor, Mr. Reyes, well, all council members that do want to, you know, pave more streets, add more sidewalks. And we'll be able to do that through our regular budget also. So just, you know, put on your thinking hats and see what projects you want to add to our capital improvement program. I just wanted you to see a clear picture that right now we do have $20 million in projects. And we only have $10 million. I do know that we're working out there really hard, so, but let us know. That's what we're, that's why we're having this workshop. I just wanted to simplify it by this, creating a spreadsheet that gives you actual numbers.
Mr. Perez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Rulatte, would you be able to scroll up and, so I can see the, excuse me, the totals for what's been spent for the sidewalks? Is there, is there an area?
Correct. So for the sidewalks, we have, hold on, hold on. So the contract that was awarded was for $428,283 for the sidewalks that are currently being implemented. implemented, the project started about two weeks ago. It should be completed by September. And these are the the streets that were selected. Now, remember that the safe this isn't a Safe Routes to School project. This is a project that administration said we're going to go and add to the Safe Routes to Schools. So the Safe Routes to Schools starts from the schools out. What administration is trying to do is create sidewalks from the outside older communities in. So the ultimate goal is that we all meet in the middle, and the whole city gets sidewalks.
Okay, because that way, I just wanted to see, so we can get a better picture as to maybe do if I agree that we should do a phase two for the sidewalks. And so I just wanted to get my bearings on maybe the the budget allotment for that. Thank you.
And as you you all received the fiscal audit, we do have a very wealthy general fund that you can use some type of some some of those funds to do a phase two of the sidewalks. If that is something that you wish, but that would be through our general budget. Unless you want to switch some of the projects out and create sidewalks with the capital, with the COs.
I just want to be able to maximize our our funding. So I mean, if I wouldn't want to divert funding from the COs if we have bigger projects that are are in store for us.
Agreed. And also remember that we don't know if this new rescue plan allows us to do sidewalks. And that's something that we're waiting very anxiously to see how we can spend those funds.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Villalobos?
I just want to say that, Mr. Perez, I agree with you and Mr. Rodríguez for bringing that this this to light and letting us know that maybe a phase two. While we were campaigning, one of the biggest was biggest complaints were sidewalks. And so we've we really need to start giving our residents what they're requesting because obviously it's needed. It's needed. So I I just want to say that I agree myself. And hopefully, we can get grants or we can get this this money that's out there to to be able to add more sidewalks. Thank you.
Mayor, and I also, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Just where we can, Ms. Villalobos, remember, I'm in my area. If we take up a sidewalk, we're probably in the in the living room of some of the homes with a sidewalk. So wherever we can, I mean, that's that's the thing.
Correct. And also, I wanted to add that we do have a presentation. I know that we had mentioned about doing an ambulance service on this side of town. And also, we wanted to pitch something regarding dispatch since we're but we do have the Chief of Police that will present a presentation. That is not captured in any of our numbers here. And that's because we wanted to present to you all before we make a decision at our next workshop. But we wanted you all to have the information available. Chief, are you ready?
I'm ready, ma'am. Good evening, American Council, Dave Burton, Chief of Police.
He is having technical difficulties. Give him a second.
No, I'm good. Yeah, I'm muted. Okay. So council asked us to look at moving ambulance services to a different part of the city in order to improve response times. Specifically, we've picked up some larger developments recently, and they continue to occur. Nuevo Waco Tanks comes to mind. That's a, you know, several hundred houses there now, and that's going to increase in volume. So I went around the city and looked at some of the locations. I know there was some initial conversation on Chayo. I had talked to Mr. Campion about that. That is not something right now that meets his needs. So then we looked further afield as far as, okay, what other buildings or property does the city own currently that we can convert at minimal cost? So if we take Puna, which is the current dispatch center, and we convert that into an ambulance station, and to to convert into an ambulance station needs several things. You have to have sleeping quarters for the amount of crew that you have on an ambulance. You have to have a kitchen or eating facility. You have to have a laundry facility. You have to have bathrooms with showers. And then you have to have a day room or a work room where they can then do their paperwork. So I did ask a contractor, just to take a quick look. This contractor has done work for the city in the past. And he came up with a conversion price. If we take Puna, we can convert that for $48,350. That will include, by the way, an electric gate for the outside facility, an extension of the overhead cover to cover an additional six feet, so the ambulances are completely covered overhead. And it'll give us outside power as well, outside power and lighting, so we can run 24/7 operations. And from that location, we won't lose a walk-in capability. We're going to have the front foyer that'll be set up for a walk-in so that if anybody in that neighborhood needs an ambulance state, an ambulance response, and they want to do that on foot, they have that capability to contact the staff. That's the ambulance station taken care of. Now, what do we do with dispatch if we do that? So the problem with dispatch is that the equipment is approaching 10 years old or more. Last year, we put about $6,000 into dispatch. This year, we put $8,000 into dispatch. That does not include building repairs that were also occurring. Plumbing and air conditioning are two examples that we've also fixed this year in the building. So if we were to rehab the building, the building issues would be taken care of. But the equipment issues would not. So we need to relocate the communications equipment. The problem is, is the vendors are very limited in this area, and Motorola has the licensing. So we have to go with the Motorola-type products. Now, RTC is the main Motorola corporation, or the main Motorola representative, I should say, in this area. They gave us a price of $498,000 if we wanted to move that communication equipment to another location. That other location that I would have in mind would be a separate building that we would put on the police department property that is on North Moon. We would move communications there through the use of a surplus building that is available to us from Fort Bliss, actually. It's coming to us from Fort Bliss. If we don't go with RTC, there is another option. That's from Bearcom. Bearcom is a little cheaper, a lot cheaper, actually. Bearcom is $90,000 for the equipment, $9801 for the equipment. There's a $6,650 move cost of the current communications equipment because that's an RTC-type tower, so closet, rather, so we'd have RTC do that move. And then we'd need about $50,000 for rehabbing a building. So that's a lot cheaper. You can see that that is a little over $150,000 as opposed to the $498,000 that RTC. Now, RTC would be a one-stop shopping, so for logistics, it'd be very simple. For the second option, it's a matter of moving between two companies to get that done. So that's that's what we could do with dispatch if we decided to keep it in-house. Another option that we could do is we could contract dispatch services out. Now, there's two choices that we have in the area. One is the county, and one is Horizon. Horizon maintains a robust communication center because they also are responsible for dispatching ESD-1s and ESD-2. So when talking to Chief McConnell about what that price would look like if we were to dispatch with them, that's an annual cost now. So that's $446,316.71 at the current rate. They are going through an HR negotiation at the current point, so presently, rather. So we could see a 5% increase on that, which would bring the cost up to $446,316.71. So that I just wanted to present that as two things that we could look at as far as, hey, does that meet our needs as far as moving the ambulance station? Yes, it does, because it's very close proximity. It's one back road. Karachi would put us right into that neighborhood if that's a concern. The other concern is the other access, obviously, is right up to North Loop, which is a main artery. And that places our ambulance assets actually at opposite corners, which gives us a greater coverage. Because obviously, now we'd be on the northwest side, and presently, we're on the southeast side, being on Vineyard. The good news is, is we can cover the rehab of Puna through the CARES Act. It meets the criteria. The other good news is we can we can cover the cost of initially getting the building, the surplus building from Fort Bliss, moved to the police department also by using CARES Act. Both in both cases, we're talking about $49,000, so $98,000 total. It does meet the language total, the whole project, meets the language of the American Rescue Plan as well. Because it's increased medical, what we would be putting it under is increased medical response. So even if we went with the $498,000, which is the Cadillac-type option here, we could still put in for the funding request from American Rescue Plan. Obviously, that would come out of the monies that are coming to the city when the state decides to, well, the federal government first, and then the state releases that from that point forward. But I just wanted to give you those two options that we do have available to us. And I can take any questions as far as what council has.
Mr. Perez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. So just for clarification, so we're talking about about $400,000 to move the equipment or to, is it to move the equipment or purchase new equipment, communications equipment?
Right. So what we'd be looking to do, sir, is to purchase four new consoles. We can't move the consoles. They're too old. There is there is closet equipment that we must take with us. It's a stack. It's transceivers, it's receivers, it's scanners. That's the $6,000 cost that RTC has. Whether, doesn't matter which company we go with, we have to move that equipment. When we move that equipment into into a new location, then we would have to then purchase the consoles, which is the additional cost, either the $90,000 through Bearcom or the total package through RTC, which would be $498.
And so a further clarification, so then that would be a one-time cost, correct? In terms of purchasing the equipment and all those things that go with it versus a yearly contractual cost of about $400,000 if we were to go, let's say, with Horizon for dispatch services? Is that correct?
So, yeah, there's there's another aspect to that. So don't forget that right now, we pick up an annual payroll anyway. So we pay dispatchers. All right, so our annual cost is still present in that it's it's our dispatches that we pay for. Presently, we employ 11 dispatchers. One of those is paid for by Canatil because of the call volume that we have with that agency, and we handle their calls for service. If we were to go with Horizon, we would not employ 11 dispatchers anymore. That number would actually drop to eight. Now, I will tell you this. No matter what council decides to do, just keep this in mind. If we give dispatch away because it's fiscally responsible or it makes sense to do so, getting it back is very difficult because then we're talking about initial outlay now of a new building plus whatever equipment costs that we have at that time. So now we could be in extensive of $750,000 to $800,000. And, you know, what does future development look like for the City of Socorro? Do you want to have your own fire department? Do you want to have your own health department? Does it make sense to maintain our own communication systems? Or does it make sense to contract with Horizon? Very capable, very capable chief, very capable communications manager there, very capable equipment. It's just which direction the city chooses to go to to go to. Do we keep our own or do we contract out?
Thank you.
Ms. Villalobos?
Chief, and Ms. This question's for Chief and Ms. Rodríguez. I know you probably brainstormed this, talked about this. If you had to vote right now, which one would you pick? And your opinion is very important.
We've been going back and forth. I think, you know, there's days where we're like, yes, we need to contract it out. And then there's days that, no, we need to keep our own. I think we are a growing city. I would hate to go, I feel like if we give it up, we're going backwards and not moving forward. It feels that way. I do know it's a new trend that other municipalities are doing. I know that the 911 would be happy because they wouldn't have to fund ours. They would just go through Horizon. But please understand that Horizon, every year, we would be into an interlocal agreement. That pricing is going to go up. And we would have no control over it. And like Chief said, is two, three years from now, administration changes, and they don't want us anymore. We're still going to have to invest, and it's just starting from scratch. Or they can skyrocket our pricing, and we just wouldn't have control over it. I'm not saying that would happen, but it gives me a sense of anxiety just to know that we have no control over it.
I have a two-point question. Go ahead, Chief. I'm sorry. I have a follow-up question.
So I mean, I, you know, Chief McConnell and I have a very close relationship. I trust him implicitly. The price that he's giving us is not going to jump any more than than what he's told us it is for today. And, you know, maybe that 5%. But like the city manager said, you know, as far as future increases, that that may be at a greater pace than than the city can absorb, depending on our total revenue. So we would lose some of that control. Additionally, we would be reducing our personnel staff. Now, what do we do with that personnel? Are there positions, or are we just going to cut them loose? So I think you have to bring that into mind into mind as well.
Okay, but you still haven't told me which one is best.
So if so, if we were going today by pure fiscal responsibility, then the cheaper price is to go with Horizon.
Is to go to where, I'm sorry?
With Horizon. That's the cheapest price, is to go with Horizon. If you go, if you're looking at expansion and future development within the city, then what are you looking at for future needs? Like I said, if you're trying to put an all-in-one type emergency services together here under a public safety director, which is an organization that municipalities use, then we don't know what that future will look like. And we don't know exactly what our call volume is going to be eventually. I mean, I can tell you, since I've been here, the police department went up 1,000 calls in one year. We went from 27,000 to 28,000. That's just one year. So, you know, next year, are we going to go up another 1,000? The year after that, are we going to go up another 1,000? The other thing is that we picked up additional Canatil traffic, Canatil traffic. So we're now three times the amount, almost three times the amount of where we where we started from. Now, we, I'm going to have a conversation with that Chief of Police as well to look for additional funding from that city because of the call volume that we're taking on. But, oh, and the other thing is, those would go away. We would not be supplemented by another agency at that point, because we we ourselves are contracting with Horizon.
And so my follow-up question is, it takes money to make money. So
My recommendation would be is to keep our own. Make the make the investment. And the investment doesn't have to be tomorrow, right? We still have equipment. It's how do we prepare for that for for that jump? I know that the sense of urgency for the ambulance to come to this side of town is now. So we would have to come up with an but right now, we have so much opportunity with all this other funding. Like Chief said, get a building with CARES Act funding because it meets the criteria. The time to do it is now. I I believe. That's my recommendation. Is we have, we're going to have a lot of opportunity, and we just need to be ready for it.
But we do stand to make money if we were to house it ourselves.
I don't know if we're going to make, we're not a profitable enterprise, ma'am. Emergency services just are not profitable. We're going to be, you know, that 50% mark on the on the city budget. That's reality for first responder-type services. I think that's what we're going to be looking at. It's just a matter of what you're willing to outlay now initially or if you want to do this on an annual basis and then go into the negotiations with Horizon. If that's, like I said, there are two options. Horizon is the most reasonable. And you'd have to enter into the annual agreements with Horizon based on pricing.
And also remember, I mean, in 2016, the fiscal year audit, the presentation that was given to us the presentation that was given to us is, in two thousand sixteen, we're looking at property taxes at six million. Right now, we're almost at ten million, right? So the city's only growing and you can see all the new development that's, that's surrounding us. So I, I mean, my recommendation would be is let's, let's try to invest on our own, but it's not my decision, so.
What worries me is that we keep talking about this CARES money and we're just running it thin now, you know, with all these other projects, projects, and I don't know how much of that-
Correct, but you, so you do have the CARES Act, and then you have the rescue, the rescue plan that Biden's administration just gave out. They just haven't released the stipulations. Plus, there's gonna be a lot of federal funding for MPO projects that are coming down the streamline, um, with also that rescue plan that's set aside for federal highway and other projects that we can tap into. Uh, we just have to make sure that we're, you know, we're ready and that we, we're looking out for them.
Yeah.
Uh, but I do feel that we're very aggressive. I mean, we have a great team that we, I mean, you should see those emails that go on a daily basis when there's information of, of funding being out there.
I believe Chief had something to add?
Yeah, just to follow up. So the, uh, staff last week sat down and said, okay, so what does our total expenditure look like for CARES Act funding, right? Cause it's gonna end. CARES Act is gonna go away by the end of the year. And we have about one point three million dollars left. So how do we spend that one point three? And, and what projects can we allocate that for? And are we gonna go over, under, where are we gonna be? Do we have to turn money back to the county, uh, or not? Um, so going through those figures, if we move, if we got the building now from Fort Bliss and we paid for the rehab of Puna right now, we would not exceed our, our expected, uh, CARES Act expenditures. In fact, I think we're about forty to fifty thousand dollars we still have available to us, even though, uh, that's small business loans, uh, that's e- economic assistance, and then obviously now the communications, uh, aspect of things. So using the CARES Act wouldn't, uh, run us over this. It's the follow-up. We have to go with the American Rescue Plan to pay for the communications because we're talking anywhere from a hundred and fifty to, to five hundred thousand dollars. Um, and if we did not get that, if somehow we didn't get that, then, uh, because we started the initial moves, then we would have to take that out of capital improvement, because otherwise my communication center would have nowhere to go.
Big decision. Ms. Duran?
One, uh, one option that I didn't hear was, um, purchasing, say, a mobile home for the ambulance, uh, service. That would have their, all of the, everything that they would need, and we would not need to gut out Puna. And that would save, what, forty-eight thousand dollars right there for the gutting and rebuilding of Puna? And I, I don't think we should farm out our, our, uh, communication system. We're only gonna grow, and down the line, like Chief said, it's gonna get very expensive to get back. I mean, eventually, we're gonna have to have our own fire department, and our emergency services are only gonna grow, as well as our, uh, police department. It's all gonna grow, because the growth pattern is, is coming towards Socorro. So, uh, then, you, you guys need to look at one more option. Uh, Mr. Campion, the only thing he said he needs is what you all outlined, and a cover for, to protect the ambulances from the, from the elements. So that, that's one option that wasn't, wasn't, uh, brought up, and I think that's one option that we need to look at.
Mr. Perez?
Thank you. Uh, I think that, um, I agree, Ms. Duran, that we need to keep the communications, uh, here in, in the city. Um, I think that we need to look at it, at, look at it as an, uh, an investment in our electronic infrastructure, because, uh, we're, we're having growing pains now, but we will be at a point where we're going to, uh, have to, we're gonna have to provide, uh, you know, other kinds of services, emergency services, uh, that a city typically provides. And so I think that we need to just start laying the groundwork now so that we can, uh, be prepared for when that happens.
Ms. Rodarte?
Yes, and I just wanted to clarify, uh, I think what we are pitching is type of, like a mobile home, uh, modular, that we can get through the surplus, uh, which would only cost you the transportation to bring it to, um, the PD. What we're gonna have to invest is in the communication, the software. That's, that's the four, that's the four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars that we're gonna have to invest, is in the software that is coming to an end, uh, unfortunately due to usage. But I mean, we did provide, you know, modular, um, type of building.
Yep.
Chief?
Thank you. Mr. Duran, so, uh, the transportation, so we're not paying for the modular home, uh, we are paying for the transportation, they have to break it down and bring it to us. That's seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. We did go to the local El Paso, uh, mobile home off of Alameda just to take a look, uh, to see what that cost. Um, uh, a mobile home from the dealer was ninety-eight thousand.
And there is an agenda item for, for that particular purchase?
One, one follow-up question. Uh, with regards to our communication center, do we, are we having to move it right now or, uh, can we leave it where it is and then just make some upgrades to it to save that, uh, quite a bit of money? Or do we have to move it now, or is it, is it so obsolete that right now is the time to move it, where we have the, uh, the option with the CARES Act money?
I mean, yeah, I think it makes sense that if we're gonna do this, that we use the funding available, because I don't want that to go away and then have me come to you and ask you for five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, if I, if we can take that from the American Rescue Plan, um, and then failing any of that, uh, then we would, you know, have to come back for CIP. Um, so the worst-case scenario is, is we would need the, the five hundred thousand from, from CIP. If you decide to go with RTC, we don't have to, we can go with the lower bid, which is a hundred and fifty, which would be from Bearcom. Obviously, that's, and I, and I would probably propose that if we were going with our own CIP, because obviously then we're not affecting so many projects.
Just a, a question, is there gonna be any, if we decide to, to move it, is there any downtime on it, or?
So, there would be downtime, sir. Uh, we're looking at, uh, several weeks worth of, uh, moving the equipment. However, uh, the, uh, plan for that is we would be housed temporarily out of the nine-one-one center, Thread Gill. They have pods there for emergencies where different cities, municipalities can use it for communication purposes. Uh, TJ, uh, Trinity is, uh, my supervisor, communication supervisor, he's already reached out to nine-one-one, uh, that's not a, a problem.
Thank you.
I honestly agree with, with Chief and Ms. Rodarte. We're a growing city, and I mean, all of you agree as well, so we're a growing city, and I believe in the future, it's, it's just gonna get bigger and we're gonna need, we're gonna have some necessities of a fire department as well. So if we do have the money now, why not invest it in something that we can use? Our citizens, um, you know, definitely deserve this. And, and like Chief said, if, if we have that money now, and later we may not have it. And do we have any other questions or comments at the moment?
So that concludes, um, the workshop. Again, we will have another workshop at our next meeting. At that point, you can give me ideas if you wanna ma- uh, make any changes. If not, then it moves to adoption once we go through the budget. And I will send out the, the updated spreadsheet to all council members.
Mr. Perez?
Just a question. So then, um, for budgetary allocations, can we propose now, or does that have to come, do we do that later on? Just, I can, please clarify.
Correct, so this is a capital workshop for your COs and capital, like your big, bigger projects. We are gonna have a budget meeting, uh, I think in June, like the end of June?
The general fund?
And at that point, through our general fund, so at that point, anything, uh, street named, this shoulder work, um, any, anything, you know, the sidewalks, anything else that you wanna add, that's when we would, um, add it.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Moving on, item number six, presentation by city manager regarding April twenty-twenty-one monthly report and civil service annual twenty-twenty report.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm going to provide you the highlights from the departments for the month of April. Municipal Courts Department collected one hundred and eleven thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars in the month of April, received two hundred and forty-seven citations from Socorro PD, one citation from the Department of Public Safety for animal control and a hundred and ten ordinance violations. We have HR that had no civil service in the month of April, one separation, we had Rodrigo Molina, our grant tech, that was separated, and we had no new hires. The Parks and Public Works Department received our new street sweeper, uh, that is currently pending insurance before we start using it out on our streets. They paved our Rio Vista Community Center parking lot, it, it was completed, so when you have an opportunity, please drive by, it looks amazing. Uh, they did complete the Judy Lane Street overlay, the installation and repair of pond, uh, fountain at Bulldog Park. They also did the parking lot restriping of Chayo Podaca, and continue to maintain, mow, and groom all city parks and ponding areas. The police department received one thousand three hundred and sixty-four calls of service, made nineteen arrests during the month, and officers continued to attend trainings to keep them in compliance with certifications. Our City Clerk Department prepared agendas and minutes for meetings scheduled for April first and fifteenth, received thirty-six open records and responded to forty-two. Our Planning and Zoning Department collected ninety-six thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars, issued three hundred and seventy-four permits, a hundred registrations, ten applications, and a hundred and twenty letters. Our Recreations Department had the, uh, visit from Trener HL for the Rio Vista Rehabilitation. They actually came out on-site and are completing their work. Uh, we had the Safety Soldier Community Campaign, also the Sinch Bug Campaign. We had, uh, to continue to work with Code Four Vaccination. They continue to work with the Court Four for the vaccination clinics. Our VCC Virtual Tour Project, they have weekly deliveries to our senior citizens. In April, they had no HLC due to lack of quorum, and they continue to keep up with all social media platforms, media inquiries, and press releases, depending on what's happening in the city. Our IT Department, uh, completed the installation of the security camera for recycling center and is working on the Recreations Department, and, uh, that security camera is actually working. We have cited several people, uh, for leaving or dumping in the weekends or after hours. Uh, we, he's also completing the three sixty-five implementation to all staff, and of course, troubleshooted all IT-related issues for all city departments. Our Grants Department hats, uh, was awarded sixty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars to the Socorro Police Department for fiscal year twenty-twenty Stone Garden, a submission of the City of Socorro's first-ever economic development incentive package to the Texas Economic Development Office, additional updates to the City of Socorro's Chapter Three Eighty Economic Development Policy, attended annual grants training from the National Grants Management Association, administered support for the El Paso MPO Tech Start Projects to include Arterio One, Nuevo Eco Tanks Road Extension, Passmore Share Path, the Rio Vista Bridge Replacement, and the Bovi Bridge Replacement Projects. And as always, it is the goal of the department to continue to meet the funding needs and priorities of each department in order to enhance our capacity to serve the residents of Socorro. Our city auditor commenced test work for cash disbursements, internal audit from October twenty-twenty to February twenty-twenty-one, commenced planning and test work for purchase cards disbursements review from February twenty-twenty-one and March twenty-twenty-one, and assisted the city manager of a walkthrough for the development of planning and zoning standard operating procedures. Okay, that concludes our highlights for the department. I also have a report from Civil Service, our annual report. Uh, the Civil Service Commission was scheduled to meet on February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty, but canceled its meeting due to the lack of quorum. The Civil Service Commission met on June twenty-second, twenty-twenty to discuss and approve the police department's policies and procedures manual. Also discussed in this meeting was the request for grievance hearing of Brian Alvarado, ex-employee of the Public Works Department. Mr. Alvarado was set for a hearing, uh, for July twenty-seventh. So the Civil Service Commission was scheduled to meet on July twenty-seventh, but did not establish a quorum. The Civil Service Commission met on August twenty-fourth, sit to hear the grievance of Brian Alvarado, however, Mr. Alvarado never joined the meeting. And that concludes our twenty-twenty Civil Service Commission report. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevades is absent. Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to our regular agenda, public hearing and ordinance, item number ten, public hearing and ordinance for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro master plan and rezoning of tracks two D, one D, two C. Give me one moment here. Two C one, one D three, one C one, four A two B, four C, four B one, four B two, one C, one H, one B, one B one, six C, six B, and six A. Block six, Socorro grant from A one C two to R two C two for a new residential development. It is now eight oh three PM.
Mayor, we have a speaker, Miriam Cruz. Yes, Ms. Cruz, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I covered my camera. Um, thank you. I wanted to talk about this, uh, because I was present when this was presented, at the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, obviously, I'm not speaking on behalf of them since I, guess I haven't signed all the paperwork, uh, but I am just speaking as a constituent, uh, since I did attend when that, uh, item was presented, uh, during that meeting. Um, it's my understanding, a- at the bottom, it says statement of the issue petitioners asking for a zone, uh, zoning change. Uh, they are no longer asking for a variance, uh, to the area that is required in R two zones. And so I, I just hope that city council can inquire, uh, to Mr. Terrazas, um, and other staff about what that variance was going to be. I think it's important for you guys to have a little bit of history, um, especially since it's, it seems pretty important since the Planning and Zoning Commission could not reach a consensus, and they don't have a recommendation for this item. Um, uh, personally, when that variance was requested, I believe that there was some, um, I'll say number, hmm, they weren't very accurate with it, with the, the, uh, actual amount of property that was being, uh, talked about. I, I think there were some issues about that, but I think that's up to you, council, to, to inquire about, um, since there's not a whole lot of, uh, obviously, uh, there's no summary of what types of discussions happened in the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, and, and I, I, I just think it's a very important issue that you guys need to look into. Um, I, I'll say more, I guess, in, in item eleven. Thank you.
Mayor, those were all our speakers for public, public hearing.
Public hearing is now closed at eight oh six PM. Item number eleven, second reading and adoption to the hearing that just occurred.
Motion to approve for discussion? I'm sorry. I apologize, I jumped the gun, sorry about that.
We do have Enrique Escobar, owner, and the engi- the engineer Jorge Azcarate on the line in case you all have questions.
Thank you. Mr. Perez?
Uh, I had, I, I did have a question, ma'am, uh, as well. Uh, do we need a motion, though?
Yes.
Before we proceed?
Please.
Uh, I'd like to go ahead and, uh, uh, motion to approve this item for discussion?
Second.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Perez?
Uh, well, I'll, I'll, I apologize. Uh, I'll let Mr. Terrazas, uh, do his presentation first, and then I'll ask a question.
Evening, mayor and council. Uh, this is Joe Terrazas, Planning and Zoning Department.
Evening, Mayor and Council. This is Joe Terrazas, Planning and Zoning Department. So this is an ordinance to change the zoning on several properties. They're asking for zoning change from A one C two to R two C two. These properties are located along North Loop. So, but constituent mentioned earlier, they were asking for a variance to reduce the size of the lots, of some of the lots that were going to be proposed. But at the last minute, a developer decided not to proceed with the variance, and they're just asking for the R two at the moment. What happened here is, the first time that we sent it this to the Planning and Zoning Commission, a developer was going to acquire some land that belongs to the Water Improvement District. They said it didn't go through, so they had to redo the conceptual design that they had. And when we took it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, they could not agree to the variance that they were asking. So the reason for that is because some of the commissioners were making it clear that they don't feel comfortable approving fifty-six percent of the lots to be reduced below six thousand square feet. They also made a comment, doing that, we're creating an R three subdivision, which are no longer allowed. So at the moment, they want to back off on the variance, asking for R two. And they are working on the lemonade plat. They will bring it back, and they're going to send you two options according to the developer to see which one is the one that you prefer. At the moment, they're only asking for R two and C two. I also, have a little, in your backup material, you're going to see proposed zoning.
Sarah Duran?
So you have this little drawing?
Hello?
And that's how they want to subdivide the land. I don't know if you have any questions. Also, Mr. Azcarate and the owner are also online. If you have any questions for them as well.
Go ahead, Mr. Perez.
Thank you. Joe, thank you for the presentation. So then, at this time, just for clarification, no variance will be sought. No variance will be pursued, correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, so then all of the, so then, just to make sure, then the residential, the proposed residential areas will be C two, excuse me, R two?
R two. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Duran?
In the original plat, it showed two, the parks in two different spots. I'd like to, you know, when they bring it to us, I'd like the park to be central to the entire subdivision and not near any roads that are proposed or that are going to be proposed because I think the Nuevo Eco Tanks is going to go down the middle of this subdivision. And if we have parks near those roads, people are going to park on the street. It's going to cause congestion. So I'd like to see the park, instead of having two separate parks, one central park away from the major streets.
Mayor, and we have a speaker for this item. Miriam Cruz?
Thank you. And thank you so much for the presentation, Joe. Mr. Terrazas. There, as part of requesting that variance, they were requesting that variance and saying that they were going to be giving extra right-of-way to the City of Socorro for that Nuevo Eco Tanks road, and I guess I'm wondering if that is still part of the deal or not. And I'm thinking potentially that might be discussed in item thirty something, thirty-three, I don't know, but I guess I was just wondering if that's information that can be provided to City Council to better make your decision. I think that's another important point. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
Ms. Vialos?
I think that, if I'm not mistaken, well, if we allow Mr. Enrique to speak, I think they were going to do that if they had acquired that, that commercial, that commercial land, if I'm not mistaken. Just to answer Mrs. Miriam's question. Is he, is he available?
What is the question?
She was talking about at, if, if we had granted the variance or if the variance had gone through, there was a piece of property that was going to be, I guess, given to the city, donated to the city, something like that?
Well, we will work with the city to design the subdivision. First, we need to see if we can acquire extra property that is needed. And then after we get the zoning, we will design it according to the city standards and with working with the city. So this is not, right now, we're not in design phase. Right now, we're only trying to get the zoning.
Ms. Miriam, I hope this answers your question.
So if I heard correctly, you'll be bringing back two different designs for us? Is that correct?
We don't know at this point what we're going to do unless we get the zoning first.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevades is absent. Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colonia Lovas?
Yes.
Item number twelve, public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed rezoning of tracks one A three zero and one A three zero eight Lay Clark Survey two ninety-three, located at one one three five three Stockyard Road from unclassified to C two general commercial for a trucking business. It is now eight fourteen.
Mayor, we have a speaker for this item. Jose Olivas?
Yes, hi. I am speaking on behalf of Jose Olivas. I'm Jessica Garcia. And I don't have a presentation. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer. I'm just hoping that we are considered to be approved to a commercial lot. Are there any questions?
Ma'am, we're doing public hearing.
Yes?
Do you have any, anything else to comment, ma'am?
No, as far as what we understood was that we were...
I can barely hear her. Can you, can you please speak up?
Yes, I'm, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. No, I don't have a presentation. As far as I, what we understood was that we were just to be present, and if there were any questions, we can answer them.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. All right, give us just one second, please. Okay, public hearing?
Thank you.
Is now closed at eight sixteen PM. Item number thirteen, second reading and adoption to the hearing that just occurred.
Motion to approve and adopt?
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a rezoning. The property is currently unclassified. This property is located on Stockyard. It's right at the intersection of Stockyard and Alisa Road, next to the Sparks Arroyo. Currently, the property is vacant. They're cleaning up a little bit of debris that was left over. And they, it doesn't have a zoning classification, so they want to, they're asking for C two general commercial so that they can be allowed to park their trucks in this property. And the applicant, Mr. Olivas, is the one who was on the line speaking in the public hearing. If you have any questions for them as well.
Do we have any questions? Mr. Perez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Joe, just a quick question. Nothing has to be done to the, to the arroyo, correct? Nothing has to be, you know, as far as it being, whatever has to be done to it, no?
No. Nothing has to be done, and we did meet with Mr. Olivas out in the field, and he made it clear that he has absolutely no intention of modifying the arroyo. So the only thing he's going to do is he's going to clean up the property, level it, and prepare it for his trucks.
Will they be fenced, that we know of?
He didn't mention about cleaning up any fence or anything, no, sir.
Ms. Vialos?
So in approving this, because I noticed that staff and even the board recommended the approval, they meet all the standards that we require. And that, that includes not having a fence?
That is correct. The area where this business will be located will be a commercial zone. So it's not common to have fences around a commercial property.
Okay. And how about retaining their own water, ponding?
Yes, that's going to be some of the requirements they need to meet. Once they submit for a grading plan, we are going to make sure that they comply with MS four requirements.
Thank you for the clarification, sir.
Mr. Duran?
Joe, could you put up that picture again, that aerial? Okay, my question is down there at the, I guess, the southern part. It looks like it does drain into the Sparks Arroyo. Are there going to be any problems? I know that you cannot, I've heard that you cannot change the flow or anything regarding an arroyo. So when I'm looking at that, is that where the ponding area is going to be?
They still have not brought in any grading plans, so we don't know exactly where they're going to be designing their ponding area. This is a portion of land that was damaged by a very heavy rain that came, I believe it was back in twenty seventeen, where this arroyo that's coming from Stockyard started to overflow, and it caused a lot of damage on his property, and then also there's a little bit of damage in the bottom part. So they started filling up the land, and some of the materials that they were using were not allowed, so that's what they're cleaning up right now at the moment. They're taking out some of the debris and some of, some of the materials that shouldn't have been placed there in the first place. So the next step, after the approval of this zoning change, they're going to have to come in with a grading plan. And with that grading plan, they're going to have to show calculations for the size of the lot and the size of the ponding that is required.
Just as long as they're not going to be any discharge into the Sparks Arroyo. We have enough water going in there as it is.
Yes, that's correct. We did meet with Mr. Olivas, and we made it clear that he will not be allowed to drain into the arroyo. And just for reference, the neighbor across the arroyo, he did approach us, and he wanted to drain into the Sparks Arroyo. He was told the same thing. So he has a ponding area here on the side, and it's the same condition that is going to be enforced on Mr. Olivas.
Ms. Vialos?
I just wanted to make a comment to the, to the property owners. You know, you're very close to where a lot of water runs, maybe not every year, maybe every three years, every five years. And I just want you to be well aware that if that happens to your property, you know, the city's not liable. Constantly, we get, you know, these type of properties, and then they start to flood, and they think it's the city problem, and it's not. You're aware of what the potential of the rain passing through there could, could cause damage, you know, to your property, and just be aware of what you're doing and what it could potentially in the future cause. And I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes?
It's going to be commercial. Are they going to do any work, like on the, on the trucks, like a shop, or is it just for storage?
Only for the parking of the trucks. They mentioned that they have no intention of doing any mechanic work. It's only for the parking of their trucks.
And?
Mr. Reyes?
Just a comment, not a question, to Mr. Olivas. Just to, it's kind of sound weird, but to keep it clean, we're trying to have everybody in the same page. Your shop, your storage, it's your property. Just help us, help the city look a little bit better. Thank you.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevades is absent. Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colonia Lovas?
Yes.
Item number fourteen, public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of lots eleven and twelve, block two, pool subdivision located at one zero eight six zero and one zero eight seven zero Shanda Circle from C two general commercial to R one single-family residential. It is now eight twenty-four PM. We have no speakers at the moment. Public hearing is now closed at eight twenty-five PM. Item number fifteen, second reading and adoption to the hearing that just occurred.
Motion to approve for discussion?
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a request to change the zoning of a property from C two to R one. Property is located at Shanda Circle. And the reason they're asking for this is because they want to build a house. It is owned, it's owned by a church. They have no intention of building a church. They want to build a house for the pastor. And they're asking for, change it back to residential. The property was zoned to commercial, but the owners were unable to develop it as commercial due to the fact that the frontage is on the back on Shanda. Same thing happened to the neighbor who couldn't sell the property because it was commercial. The zoning to R one was granted to them, so now they want to do the same thing. The neighbors want to do the same thing. I don't know, you have any questions?
Mr. Reyes?
For Mr. Terrazas, does the city have to do any sort of accommodation, special accommodations on this?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question.
Does the city have to do any special accommodation?
No, no, sir.
Thank you.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes. Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, I had a question before we proceed with the focus.
Mr. Perez?
Very quickly. Just for clarification, Joe, the owner... Just for clarification, Joe, the owner is... Am I reading it correctly? Iglesia Ebenezer, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so they are planning to build a home on the property?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevades is absent. Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Item number 16, public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed amendment of the City of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of tract 19B, block 4, Socorro Grant, located at 600 Moon from unclassified to C1 light commercial. It is now 8:28 PM.
Mayor, we have a speaker for this item. Rene Rodriguez?
Mayor and members, council of Socorro, my advice is don't change the zoning. I understand they wanna develop the land, but you don't have to give them the zoning. The reason why, because Moon and Rio Vista are at DMPO for future expansions, and if you do that, they develop that area, you're gonna put the city in a bind. It's gonna cost you more to purchase it later on in the future. So, I would just suggest to not approve the zoning. Because it is in the DMPO for future expansion. That is all.
Mayor, no more speakers for this item. Ms. Sarah? Sarah and Eloy Duran? They're just listening to the meeting. Oh, they're just listening. Okay, thank you. Public hearing is now closed at 8:29 PM. Item number 17, second reading and adoption to the hearing that just occurred. Mayor, and again, Sarah and Eloy Duran are on the line, the owners of the property, in case you all have any questions.
Motion to discuss the item.
So, approve?
Second.
Ms. Colon, Villalobos, is your motion to approve?
Well, to approve, yes, ma'am. Motion to approve for discussion.
The union mayor and council, this is a request to change the zoning of a property in the corner of North Loop and Moon Road. This property is one you see on the screen shaped like a triangle. They are asking... It doesn't have a zoning classification. They're asking for light commercial. In the past, there used to be a home that burned down, and currently, it's vacant. The owners are cleaning the property. They're taking out some leftover buildings that were there, and they are now asking for a zoning change, so they can see if they can develop a property. And Mr. and Mrs. Duran are on the line. If you also have any questions for them.
Mr. Duran?
What type of business are you planning to open up there?
Not me.
What type of business are they planning on opening?
Not...
Mr. Eloy Duran? It's just the last name is the same, sir.
No relation.
Ms. Sarah, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. I can barely hear you.
The... Mr. Duran had posed a question. What type of business were you planning on opening there?
Not a business.
A beauty shop.
Yes, we can hear you. Ms. Villalobos?
Well, the paperwork says to develop, to sell. That's what it says for C1, develop, to sell. It does not say for a beauty shop. But my... In light of what we heard earlier from Mr. Rodriguez, can we take this to executive and speak to our attorney regarding the comments that Mr. Rodriguez brought up? Will council entertain?
Yes, if you guys wanna go into executive session, I think you can. Sure, you just need to move forward.
And do we have any other items that we need to discuss since we're going into executive?
No, ma'am. We did have... We had posted an item that we're gonna request for council to delete.
So, at this time, will council entertain that we go into executive to ask questions on item number 17?
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevades is absent. Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
And it is now 8:34?
We are out of executive. This meeting is called to order. We are now in regular session. It is eight fifty-one P M.
I'd like to make the motion, change the motion, to go ahead and approve the item.
Second.
And we have a speaker for this item, Renee Rodriguez.
No, I just, I just voiced my opinion earlier. I, I'm just saying, you know, to prevent the city from costing us more money. Um, but, you know, that's all I wanted to say.
Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Yelobos.
And, um, my motion, ju- just so Mr. Rodriguez understands, my motion is based on the information we collected from the attorney. And so, um, at the, at this time, um, I, I stand on my, uh, um, motion.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevades is absent, twelve Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Yes.
Moving on to Human Resources Department, item number eighteen, discussion in action on approving job descriptions for Economic Development Coordinator.
Motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. This is Carol Candelaria. Um, I present to you, um, the, the job description for the City of Socorro Economic Development Coordinator. This position is going to be funded by grants program and it will be good through December thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. We're proposing for this position to, uh, have an annual salary of forty-five thousand, which would include fringe benefits, um, to be, not to exceed more than fifty-eight thousand dollars a year.
Mr. Lartik.
Yes, I just want to clarify, this isn't really through grant, it's through the rescue plan. Uh, we do know that it, it's toward economic development. All we want is to present a job description that we will be ready to go as soon as, um, that funding becomes available to us.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevades is absent, twelve Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Yes.
Recreations Department, item number nineteen, discussion in action regarding pending contract with Big Dog Pyro for fireworks display.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, I wanted to go ahead and touch base with you regarding the communication that I've had with our, uh, firework vendor. Uh, they are facing some difficulties in procuring, uh, the actual, um, products for our services, as well as the actual controlling of the price. There's a lot of variables that are fluctuating. And so I did want to go ahead and bring this item to council to go ahead and set a date for our firework show. We did recommend that we suggest the Winterfest, uh, event in December to go ahead and host the firework show. Uh, reason being is just so that way we can have enough time to plan. Uh, by then, the pandemic vaccination, uh, restrictions will have lifted and the vaccination efforts should have loosened. We'll also go ahead and learn from others as we go ahead and safely open up back the city. And will also give us opportunities to go ahead and focus our attention on reopening programming and services such as classes, parks, and activities of that nature. This will also be an added benefit to highlight the holiday season. And we're also suggesting December as we have ongoing improvements going on at the Rio Vista Community Center. We do owe a balance of sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty. We are suggesting that the event take place on Friday, December the third. And in regards to the, the cost of the procurement of services, we usually do go after sponsorships to go ahead and cover that, which we will follow again, um, as, um, normal.
Mayor.
Ms. Yelobos.
So, use, um, Victor, hi.
Hello.
Hello. So, um, when you say remaining balance, we had a, a, a previous balance with them because we didn't, uh, go into the Fourth of July, right, last year?
So, yes, that's correct. So what happened was prior to the pandemic, we had already procured services and got into a contract and paid the deposit. So the remaining balance would be sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
What was our deposit, do you remember?
Uh, that's the same sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty. So we paid fifty percent.
What was half?
Yes, ma'am, we paid half.
And I know that you're very good at getting sponsorships every year.
Thank you, yes, we do try to go ahead and get that sponsored as well again this year.
Right. So you think out of that, uh, the sponsorship, we can, we can minimize the sixteen two, tw- two fifty, we get sponsorships?
Yes, ma'am, correct. That's also part of our planning and, uh, extending the, the date into December, which allows us more time to go ahead and actively, uh, procure sponsorships, as well as any kind of donations, partnerships, business opportunities for some of our businesses to actually participate in the event and do corporate sponsorships as well.
Okay. Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Mr. Perez.
Thank you. Uh, Victor, just to, uh, just for clarification, um, so the, the proposed date of the fireworks display would coincide with the Winterfest, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. We are proposing the date for Friday, December third. That would be the first Friday in December.
But that would also go with, along with our, our tree lighting ceremony and all that stuff that would...
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Duran.
I realize that this, this Fourth of July, we're not going to be able to have anything due to the COVID. But I, I don't see why we should just have it in December, why don't we just postpone it? Fourth of July is meant for fireworks. I don't think that, uh, we should have one in Christmas time, just to be able to fulfill a contract. I mean, if we can postpone it till the following Fourth of July, I think that, uh, they'll have more time to, uh, procure, uh, people that will, that will pay for it.
Right, and, and...
Sponsorships. And I, I don't think we should just, uh, have it, just to have it, I think it, Fourth of July is fireworks, not Christmas time. Christmas time is for our parade of lights, it's for the tree lighting, and I think it would take away from all of that. And I think we should just postpone it till the Fourth of July.
Correct. And unfortunately, uh, we did try to get it for twenty twenty-two. However, the vendor is not able to do that for twenty, I'm sorry, to, twenty twenty-two Fourth of July. They do need us to make a decision for this year, unfortunately, just because of the level of demand for the pyrotechnics. They're unsure if they're able to guarantee us the same price for twenty twenty-two, just due to the fluctuations in pricing that they're seeing in their stock.
Well, that's, that's another reason, uh, uh, why don't we just, I, I don't think they're the only pyrotechnic group out there. Let's put it out and find out what we can get for, uh, the Fourth of July. I don't think we should just, uh, have a fireworks display just because the prices are cheap. Christmas is Christmas, the Fourth of July is Fourth of July, I don't think we should try to, uh, combine the two.
Mr. Reyes.
But the deposit, it's not refundable, right?
Correct, sir. So we've already entered into a contract with the vendor and we've already paid fifty percent down.
Ms. Yelobos. I for one want to see the fireworks on Christmas Day. I think it would be, or, or Fest, Winterfest, I think it would be wonderful. And, uh, we do get a lot of people to come out, that come out, out there and, uh, and unfortunately, we can't, we can't, uh, request our money back, obviously. If not, we would have requested it from the beginning. Um, so I for one disagree with Mr. Duran. Thank you.
Doesn't Disney, uh, do fireworks at Christmas time too?
Yes, they do.
Uh, yes, Disney does show almost every day. Um, there are other organizations that also celebrate, uh, with other ways and other methods, and it would just be something really, really special that we could do this year just because of COVID. Our normal timeline and our normal traditions are a little bit skewed.
Mr. Reyes.
So there's no way for, for us to do it this year, this Fourth of July? Is it too, too soon?
Yes, unfortunately, it's too soon for Fourth of July, um, so that's why we were proposing a later date of December. That would also give us ample time to go ahead and go after more sponsorships to get the cost lowered as well.
I agree, December third would be better for us. Um, COVID, you know, with COVID, I wouldn't risk it. Um, there, we don't know how much our, do we know our numbers, um, Victor, by any chance?
In terms of active cases or amount of...
In terms of vaccinated.
Uh, in terms of vaccinated, the City of Socorro was very fortunate to receive over six thousand vaccinations, and we've done a little bit over four thousand, just here in the city.
What, what's the percentage of you, do you know?
I don't have the percentage off the top of my head, but I do know we vaccinated over four thousand.
Okay. Um, that's still not, that's still not half of our population. Um, so we don't want to risk it, uh, by going too early, opening up too early. Um, I'd rather see this in Christmas time. Um, have the parade, have, you know, your, your big show where everybody, I know a lot, you, we get a lot of people at the Christmas, um, show, so that'd be really great for us. Do we have a motion?
Joy, bring back that joy, you know, that we need here in our city. We've had a rough year, you know, or year and a half. So let's bring that joy back.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the, um, the pyrotechnics for December third.
Second.
Second.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevades is absent, Ralph Duran.
I'm looking real quick for the Imano people that have been vaccinated, it's two thousand four hundred and eighty-nine people, not four thousand.
So, um, I can provide council with an updated presentation with all of our COVID efforts, if you'd like, at the next meeting, to go ahead and go over all the vaccinations that Code Four has done, if that'll help.
So, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna base this on, uh, on facts, I mean, it's right here, black and white, was read to us earlier.
Oh, that, that was from our monthly report?
From April, sir.
From the month of April, just April.
We're currently May twentieth.
Mm-hmm. But, you know, we don't know how many people, we, I think we should have it in black and white. And I don't think we should be, uh, if we can get funding for it, then yeah, I'm all for it, but if we can't get funding for it, I don't think we should, just because we, uh, we, we should be able to cut our losses and, uh, and not just have a, a fireworks show just, um, in Christmas time. Um, um, no.
Thank you. Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Police Department, item number twenty, discussion in action on obtaining a modular building from the government surplus program at Fort Bliss to be utilized as a communications building, the funding source would be the CARES Act.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council, Dave Burton again, Chief of Police. Uh, obviously, this line item is, uh, related to the discussion that we had in the workshop, uh, depending on the direction that, uh, council wanted to go with the Communications Department. Uh, like I explained then, you know, we do have some funding available, uh, based on your decision. Um, and that would be my, um, goal at this point, is if you approve this, then we would use the CARES Act in the amount of forty-nine thousand dollars to get that, uh, surplus building here to the Police Department property.
Mr. Perez.
I, I think that, thank you, ma'am, I, I think that it would be, uh, a, a, a good, um, first start, uh, and, or first step in making sure that we centralize, uh, the activities there, as a matter of fact, there at the, at the police, the new police station. And so even if, let's just say that, um, you know, we have, we would have other things going on, we, that, I think that that needs to be the hub for, for the police activities, Police Department activities.
Ruben Reyes.
Yes.
Cesar Nevades is absent, twelve Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Lobos.
Yes.
Item number twenty-one, discussion in action on the decision to approve the M O U between the City of Socorro and the D E A as a precursor for assignment of an H I D T A Task Force Officer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Dave Burton again, Chief of Police. Uh, HIDA stands for High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. Um, that's the, you know, the federal government loves acronyms, so that's what that stands for. Um, so, eh, as part of the policing and, and, and trying to improve, uh, or, or reduce some of our crime rate, um, you know, it's probably no stranger here to anybody to tell you that we do have some, uh, gang activity, uh, within the city, as well as street or mid-level type narcotics movement. Um, this Task Force Officer, it's a new initiative that HIDA is, uh, starting. Um, so I did attend a meeting, and what I'm trying to do is look for assets that are available within the county or the state that we can utilize within Socorro that'll assist us with our job, without necessarily, um, emptying the bank from us as far as personnel, equipment, or, or financing. So we, if we send a Task Force Officer to this organization, then we bring those assets back to Socorro as far as, um, capabilities are concerned. Now, the good news is, it's a hundred percent. They fund at a hundred percent level. Uh, so that would give us a, a full salary for an... Uh, so that would give us a, a full salary for an officer, uh, communications devices, computers, and a vehicle. Uh, up to, I believe it's six hundred dollars a month, uh, that we're allowed to get a vehicle for that officer. So, uh, my recommendation would be that we do this. Um, you know, we do have statistics that back this up as far as our activity for gangs and narcotics here. Um, right now, registered, uh, through the state police website, we, we register gang members with DPS. Uh, and we may have more than this, but we're somewhere around fifty. So we do have fifty registered members. Uh, and they, they come from fifteen different associations. And I'll take any questions you have.
Mr. Perez?
Quick question, chief. Uh, I, I think it's a good idea. Uh, as far as funding is concerned, um, you, I, I, it's, I, I suspect it's a year-to-year fund, uh, of, uh, funding, and so do you anticipate that it will continue for a while?
Yeah, so HIDA's been around for a long time. Um, it's over twenty years and, eh, as far as an organization is concerned. This is just a new capability that they're adding to, uh, the central office. Um, they actually have to take it in front of their Board of Directors in order to get, uh, approval to even start the initiative that was done already at the end of April. Um, and then I just received the MOU from DEA. There are two federal agencies that, uh, are part of HIDA. One is DEA, the other one is HSI. Uh, we already have organized, uh, we already have agreement in place with DEA, so that was the easiest route to go on this one.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Reyes?
And when would this start?
So it would start, eh, the, the technical answer is that it would start at the new fiscal year. However, they have surplus funding available now, uh, to the excess of what it would cost us from salary from now until the end of the year. So if they are approved to do that, uh, in talking to their Assistant Director, then we could see that, that, eh, if they approve the position, then we could see that financing start immediately.
Thank you.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevades is absent. Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Moving on to Planning and Zoning Department, item number twenty-two, discussion and action on the approval for the haciendas de Socorro being a portion of Track Two E Block Eleven Socorro Grant for a new development.
Motion to approve for discussion and, uh, contingent upon the, um, the recommendations of the board and staff.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is, um, an application for a subdivision. This subdivision is located along North Loop. It'll be called haciendas de Socorro. Will contain one hundred and eighty lots, one park, and two ponds. Let me, let me put it on the screen here real quick so you can see it. This is the preliminary plot. There's still, uh, some, a, a series of reports that still need to be submitted. Uh, uh, one of the biggest things that need to be aware of is that staff is recommending an additional thirty-five feet of right-of-way to be dedicated along North Loop for the future widening of the street.
Job. Job, this is Merwan, the attorney. Sorry, sorry to interrupt you, Job, on this. We're, we're discussing item twenty-two. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, that's correct.
You know, looking at the, the, um, the agenda notice, um, it says discussion and action on approval for haciendas de Socorro being a portion of Track Two E Block Eleven Socorro Grant for a new development. I think, uh, you know, and discussing this with Jim Martinez, actually, it doesn't really provide fair notice, at least, on, on what the, uh, item was supposed to be. I think he probably, eh, eh, meant include per- preliminary plat, if I'm not mistaken. I think we're missing that portion on twenty-two.
Um. Yeah, if you are correct.
So, you know, I, and I, sorry to, you know, I don't, I don't want to waste people's time on this, but I think the proper thing to do might be to move this to the next meeting, um, because it may not provide fair notice to the public on that issue. Um, but, you know, that, that's my, my thought on that, so.
So then, eh, at this point, thank you, sir. Uh, so at this point, I'll go ahead and, and rescind my, uh, motion and make the motion to, um, postpone this item until next meeting?
Second.
Ms. Radarte?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to, uh, let Merwan know that next time when we're reviewing the agenda, that the attorneys are reviewing it, we can catch it at that time. That way, nobody's time gets wasted during our public meeting. Please.
Sure. Yes, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevades is absent. Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Item number twenty-three, discussion and action on the preliminary plat approval for Valle del Sol, Unit Five, being tract thirteen A One E Block Eight Socorro Grant to create two lots for residential development.
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Terrazas?
I'm also gonna suggest that you postpone this item also because of an error in the agenda. It was published as Valle Sol Unit Four. It should have been Valle Sol Unit Five.
Oh, yes, I believe I said Unit Five?
No, on the agenda, it reads Unit Four.
Oh, it should be Unit Four.
It should have been Unit Five.
It is Unit Five.
There's an error in the agenda.
It is Unit Five.
It, it is Unit Five.
I think he's talking about the agenda, uh, not the backup, right? Is that what you're saying? Yeah.
Yes, Job, are you talking about what we published in the newspaper?
No, we didn't publish on this one.
Or? It was supposed to be Unit Four?
It should have been Unit Five.
It says Unit Five, Job.
We have Unit Five, Job, on both the agenda item and the backup.
Item number twenty-three, Job.
Okay. I, I think that might have been maybe the, the previous, like, a draft. That might have been corrected on that. Because I'm, I'm, I see five as well on this one.
So, um, has a motion been made on this, on this item?
No.
Motion to approve for discussion?
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a, a minor plat. They're proposing to subdivide a tract of land in half. They just want to split it in half. Because they want to build some apartments on one of them. Are, I'm gonna put it on the screen here real quick. This is a preliminary plat. And this is how they're trying to subdivide the land. Property is located off of North Loop and Valle Negro. I don't know, you have any questions about this one?
I do. May I, may, if I may?
Go ahead, Mr. Perez.
Uh, Job, does this also have a requirement for the, um, extra right-of-way, uh, that abuts, uh, North Loop?
No, sir, because in this particular area, the roadway is already widened. There's no need to acquire additional right-of-way.
Now, uh, if, if this motion passes, then, um, they, they will be subject to, in terms of, uh, the number of, of potential units to be built, correct?
Yes, they, they do need to meet the requirements for the, our two zones for the apartments. They are going through the rezoning of a portion of land, so they want to split it in half, so only a portion is gonna be rezoned to our two for residential use. And then, wh- once that happens, they're gonna have to meet set backs.
Ms. Villalobos?
So have they expressed what type of apartments? I have two questions. Uh, what type of apartments they, uh, plan to build, and how many? And then also, um, you did mention that the other side would be residential? At, at this point, that's what they're, eh, they want to do residential on one side and, and, uh, apartments on the other side?
They want to do apartments on only one part of the, let me put it on the screen here again. So basically, all this is one tract of land. They're gonna split it in the middle. And this area here is the one that they're gonna develop for apartments.
How many? Have they expressed?
No, we still haven't seen the construction plans. We don't know how many are gonna fit in this area.
Or what they look like at all? They haven't expressed that either?
That's correct. We don't know that.
And on the other side, do you know what they plan to do with that?
No, there's been no discussion about the rest of the land. We don't know what they're gonna do with it.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Here it says that there's a commercial portion that's two point eight acres. Would that be the rest of the tract? That's gonna be divided?
Yes, that is correct. A remaining portion, portion will remain as commercial.
Okay. But there's no plan to build anything commercial there?
No, we haven't, we still haven't seen any plans for that development. We don't know what's gonna happen.
Any other questions? And do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I believe we have a speaker. And we have a speaker for this item. Miriam Cruz?
Thank you. Um, so I wanted to mention a couple of things. I don't know how often any of you council members go through North Loop, especially now that you're not having to go through there to the meetings. Um, traffic is already ridiculous on North Loop, especially during peak hours. Um, and, and not even everything is back open, which makes me think of how crazy it's just gonna get, how much crazier it's gonna get. The item that you guys postponed for next meeting, um, is also along North Loop, further down, and, and eh, for a lot, a lot of, a lot of homes. And, you know, basically, they're all on top of each other. I know we've done away with R three, but man, some of those R twos look like R threes. Um, and as someone that's looking for, to buy a home here in Socorro, I, it's, it's hard to find something that's, that's nice, that's something that I, that I want. And that's unfortunate because Mr. Uh, Escobar, who I know is not in part of this, this thing, always mentions, oh, well, you know, people in Socorro can afford it. You know what? I have met so many people who have come from California, and they're the ones coming into the art community, which is fine. But it's, eh, it doesn't seem like we're building these things for, for people here in Socorro. And so unfortunately, I, I just, again, I'm not opposed to growth, but it seemed like that was the perfect area for actual commercial, for shopping center, for something like that. And so I, eh, it's just unfortunate.
Ms. Cruz, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Villalobos, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just want to say as a Realtor, um, and as somebody that has sells here in Socorro, um, there is nothing out here right now. Um, you know, you put a house on the market and four, you get within four hours, five hours, you have six, seven offers. Uh, you put it on the market, you have eight families outside waiting. Um, all the houses that are being built can't be built fast enough. Um, everything that's being built already has a contract. Um, these subdivisions don't have any lots anymore unless, uh, unless they open up, uh, they develop some new lots. I think just maybe in the last month. But those houses are going so quick. And unfortunately, they're starting at one eighty and above, at a thirteen hundred square foot home. Um, yeah, our people can afford it because of the low interest rate right now. Um, and, and so when we say that we can't find anything nice in Socorro, they're nice homes. They're very nice homes. Fortunately, they're a little small, but that's the market we're living in right now. That's the, the time that we're living in. And so, and, and it's just gonna continue to skyrocket from there, um, unfortunately. Um, and then the other, the other question, or, uh, I wanted to also tell Ms. Miriam that unfortunately, we can't stop them from, this is their land. We can't stop them. You know, uh, we would have to have, uh, a very good reason to stop them from developing what they need to do, or, you know, right now, it's just a zone. Um, maybe eh, once they bring their preliminary plat or something like that, maybe we can make some suggestions or whatnot. But, um, uh, you know, again, unfortunately, I hate the growth, uh, be- because of the traffic, not because, uh, we should not grow. Yes, it's, the traffic is gonna get really bad and hopefully, you know, tech stock keeps up with us, but I just wanted to, uh, let Ms. Miriam know that, um, unfortunately, we can't stop them. That's, that's their property.
Mr. Perez?
I, I agree with Ms. Villalobos, and unfortunately, uh, the state won't work on a road until there's sufficient amount of population there to justify any expansion of a road. And so, uh, I mean, that's just the way they work. And so they, they're not gonna touch North Loop unless there's, there are people, un- unless there's a need, the traffic studies are there to justify any expansion.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevades is absent. Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Motion to delete items thirty through thirty-three?
Second.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevades is absent. Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Villalobos?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. Second. Everybody seconds that.
Ruben Reyes?
Yes.
Cesar Nevades is absent. Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos?
Yes.
Meeting adjourns at nine twenty-four PM.
Be safe, everybody. Take care.
Bye.